Okay, hello, welcome. We're here for the September 13th Board of Education meeting. And Kate Ford and Ms. Wendy Sims are going to join us remote by Zoom. And are there any public comments? Okay, seeing that there are none, we're going to go ahead and go into closed session and be back for regular session. Thank you. Hi, we're here to open the meeting for the Board of Education, September 13th. And now we'll hear about language access.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We have Spanish interpretation available. We have equipment here in the back. Muy buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible para los que gusten escuchar la interpretación al español y tenemos el equipo aquí en la mesa de atrás. We also have ASL interpretation over Zoom for those that would like to access that interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Maldonado, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, good evening. Please rise and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, beget. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so now we will go to the superintendent's report. And I'm sorry, when during closed session, no action was taken in closed session. Dr. Maldonado?
Thank you very much, Board President Munoz. Good evening again, everyone. Board members, some of you and some of us participated this Sunday in a moment to remember not just the tragedy, but the incomprehensible loss that was brought on by the attacks in 9/11. We want to take a moment to recognize this 21-year-ago adversity that continues to impact so many. And I'd like for us to just take a 30-second moment of silence to acknowledge that. Thank you. And as we move forward, we want to also celebrate the spirit of our country that united in the face of such adversity. With that, board members, I'd like to move on to for today's report. We actually have some guests with us. We want to start off with Mr. Tony Ramirez. As you know, a couple of weeks ago, we selected Mr. Tony Ramirez to be our new Chief Technology Officer. We're very pleased that he has accepted the challenge to join Santa Barbara Unified. We are so proud of our school district, and I am most proud of Mr. Ramirez's experience coming to us, having been a Chief Technology Officer for four years in the West Covina School District. So with that, I'd like to ask him to say a few words to introduce himself to you and the community, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you and good evening, Board President Munoz, members of the Board, Superintendent Maldonado, Cabinet, and community members. I just want to express my extreme gratitude for this opportunity and I'm so excited to join this family at Santa Barbara Unified. It's been a warm welcome already, which is a testament to the great community here, and I feel at home, and that's very important to me. I plan to give every ounce of energy that I have to ensure the success of every student, teacher, administrator, and support staff to ensure that they have everything they need through the lens of technology, safety, security, and innovation. So with that said, on behalf of me, my wife, and my three kids, which haven't moved up to Santa Barbara yet, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
So we'll have three new students perhaps join our school district. With that said, board members, as you know, we also have been executing this practice of having the principals come in and have an opportunity to talk to you about their school because they get to be their biggest cheerleaders and tell us all of what has been going on. I think we're almost done, but today we have the amazing Principal Veronica Binkley here to tell us all about Harding University School. Welcome, Principal Binkley.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity, President Munoz, Superintendent Maldonado, our Board, Cabinet, and members of the community as well. I need my PowerPoint queued. We are so grateful to have this opportunity to share all of the wonderful things that are happening at Harding. Next slide. So it is our vision that students take action to change the world. We believe that action equals agency, and we are empowering our students to do just that. Our mission is to create environments where students are empowered to engineer solutions, express themselves creatively, and become agents of change. And our slogan, as you can see, the acronym of HAWK, is honoring agency, wonder, and knowledge. Next slide. We have, over the years, become a proof-of-concept school. A lot of that may be that we are a university partnership school with UCSB. We piloted the dyslexia program in 2017. We initiated a STEAM and outdoor ed kind of program through a First Five Grant, and we have been operating multi-tiered systems of support since 2016. Next slide. As I said, we believe action equals agency, and there are various ways that our students can participate in action, and that is through their participation, their advocacy, social justice, social entrepreneurship, and just their lifestyle choices. You can see at the bottom there is our former president of our government association, and we are running that candidacy again right now. So we have lots of interested government officials coming up. Next slide, please. I know that there's someone here on this board who really wants to become a millionaire, and so this is for her. One of the things that we've done over the last several years is to encourage students to read and to read a lot, and the way that we incentivize this is through this program. It utilizes the Renaissance Accelerated Reader Program, and students are acknowledged for reaching certain levels, and we start as early as kindergarten. We do a couple of things. We have monthly award ceremonies, and then students receive medals, and they also receive acknowledgement for reading the most words in their certain grade level between first and third and fourth and sixth. And those are the two kids that I take once a month to Chaucer's, and they get to spend $25. So that's a big deal. So next slide. We also culminate with a major millionaire treatment end-of-year celebration. The bottom corner, you can see our millionaire or our reading assemblies. This last year, I tried to mix it up so no one really knows what's going to happen. This last year, we were able to take 23 students on the land shark, which was a big deal because a lot of them had never been in the ocean, so that was great fun. Next slide, please. We have several partnerships among them. Explore Ecology, the Wilderness Youth Project, we partner with the Santa Barbara Library and UCSB. Obviously, we were able to partake in an international youth summit last year, and several students' works were acknowledged. Next slide. Here's an example of some of the students' work. Our sixth-grade exhibition project was highlighted here. This is a project by which the students, in small groups, create their own unit of inquiry in matters that matter to them, global matters, so there's social justice matters. Our students, I had a couple that I left in my office for you to actually see, but they will do like animal cruelty or whatever really matters most to them, and they do the research, they have mentors, the mentors provide them with specialists, and so they end up creating a deep research project similar to what you may see in junior high or high school. So they are very proud of that. Next slide. This is an example of our exhibition project celebration where parents are invited to. It's their promotion ceremony, and they share all of the hard work that they've done with great pride. I think Dr. Maldonado was there last year, yeah. Okay, and next slide. We have several multi-tiered systems of support, and this year we were able to reach out beyond intervention and move into extension. So we have several groups of students that are doing quite well, that are getting raised up a bit higher. We participated last year in the Battle of the Books, and one of our students was standing on stage with first prize, which was a wonderful thing to see through our tiered systems. In academics, we have four, a group of four that help provide for our students, and we also have a Tier Two friendship group through UCSB, and we run the dyslexic program, the dyslexia program for our Tier Three in MTSS in reading. Next slide. STEAM and outdoor education program has been the place kind of where everyone wants to be. Projects, students create because of a desire of, for example, the students in the middle there have plants that they potted, they potted and they planted, and they have little signs that they dropped off to all of our neighbors that said, "Thank you for growing with us." And so they walked around the neighborhood and dropped these off, which was quite sweet. You can, oh, I guess, oh, that's, that's, oh, here we go. Okay. Students are exposed to various tools that they wouldn't otherwise be exposed to, like the CNC router you see in the bottom corner, and various ways to create art and to engineer and to use technology. Next slide. Our parent engagement has really doubled. It's just amazing how many people we see at our events. I know Ms. Alvarez and Ms. Ford and Sims Moten were there at our back-to-school night, and they can account to how many people showed up. Our All Around the Harding World Open House, we had no less than 500 people. It was a huge success. That was crazy. Parents brought their parents. Okay. Next slide. And just to end with a little levity, every Friday, we have a Fun Friday event. Last Friday was Crazy Hair Day, as you can see, and our nurse really knocked it out of the park. And then we have a Joke of the Week and Top Scholar Award, so I will do a super cheesy joke on Friday, and I'll call off seven or eight kids that are acknowledged for doing great work in the classroom, and they come to my office and get a book. So that is Harding in five minutes.
Thank you so much, Principal Binkley, for your presentation to the Board. And I can attest to so many of the great things that are happening and more than anything the engaged learners that are there every day, thanks to your excellent teachers.
Thank you.
Next, board members, I want to congratulate our teacher, Kendall Stevens from La Cumbre Junior High School. I've asked the principal, Dr. Brock, to come and introduce her, but I just want to selfishly get to say that she does come from a family of educators. Her grandfather having been a counselor in San Marcos High School, and both of her parents, teachers at La Colina. This is the one thing that I just have to say that I love about Santa Barbara, and so we're very proud of you, Ms. Stevens, and I'll let Mr. Brock introduce you. Dr. Brock.
Good evening. Good evening, Board Member Munoz, Superintendent Maldonado, members of the Board, Cabinet, and also community. Kendall Stevens is, I think, symbolic of our new generation of educators here at the district. As you mentioned, she comes from a family and a tradition of excellence in the district. She is the daughter of La Colina teachers Kami and Ken Stevens. I could go on, but let's hear it from our very own Distinguished New Educator Award winner, Kendall Stevens.
First, thank you to the Board and to Dr. Maldonado for inviting me here today. I really appreciate the recognition. I'm incredibly honored to be recognized by the County Education Office as this year's Distinguished New Educator for the county. I'm a second-year teacher at La Cumbre, so I began my teaching career at La Cumbre last August, and since I've begun, I've been welcomed with open arms by our incredible school staff. Anyone that's visited La Cumbre Junior High knows that there is something so special about our school and our campus, and I'm really grateful to be working there now. Through teaching both English Language Arts and Social Studies and also serving as the ASB advisor at my school last year, I've been given the opportunity to get to know students at our school through a variety of different learning environments. Through these spaces, I've tried to create an engaging and fun school environment in which students feel really excited about coming to school, especially given coming back to school following the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight, I really'd like to highlight some of the great things that our leadership students have done at La Cumbre in creating a positive change through various school projects at La Cumbre. We hosted last year, we hosted school-wide opportunities for our students to enjoy their time, including costume contests, spirit weeks, student versus staff lunchtime games, and even a school-wide semi-formal dance last May, which was the first of our school's dances in over 10 years. Just exciting. I've worked closely with this student group of leadership students to encourage a positive school community during a time that, for many students, was a year of challenges coming back to the classroom. As a team, my leadership students and I are really excited to continue our work this year with a new group of 37th and 8th grade students in ASB. I'd like to thank my administration, including Dr. Brock and staff members at my school, that have really supported me throughout my teaching journey thus far and have created such an incredibly smooth transition from graduate school to joining the profession. As a Santa Barbara County native and a third-generation Santa Barbara Unified educator, I'm super grateful to be working in SBUSD, so thank you so much. I'm really excited to continue this work for many years to come. Thank you again to the County Education Office for this honor, and thank you to the Board for your recognition tonight. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that. Next, of course, I've been enjoying all the back-to-school visits, like all of you have, and the most important part of that has been seeing how many of our parents are coming to our back-to-school nights and seeing them going back into, we didn't even talk about this, but they're back to volunteering, fundraising, organizing, and just all around being part of our school again. And I just want to thank all the parents that have been coming, as well as all the staff that has been staying late in the evenings to welcome them. We will be beginning our fall listening tour, and I just want to remind the Board, we'll be giving you a schedule later on today for you to start to sign up to those tours. They will begin September 27th. The visit will consist of us doing a meeting greet with school staff, followed by a tour with the principal, and then debriefing with the principal. And of course, we'll be joined by our President of SPTA, we'll ask Mr. Rivas, President of CSCE, along with two or two or less board members, as per Brown Act rules, so that we can all get through. These visits will take place from, again, September 27th to November 30th. We did want to announce some Heroes of the Heart, but I just noticed we have a small technical glitch, so I do want to let the Board know and the public know. We will be posting them on our website. We have gone close to 30 nominations for our Heroes of the Heart campaign, and I just want to thank and encourage everyone to continue to let us know all the great work that's happening. For example, the Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team has been nominated, and if I can get my PowerPoint corrected, I will show you those, but for now, I think I'll end my superintendent's report with a little technical problem. It's not yours, it's mine, but I will make sure we get those up and sent out as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, and thank you, President, Principal Binkley, for being here. And congratulations to Kendall Stevens. How awesome. I look forward to seeing more, a lot about you in the years to come. Thank you. I will go ahead and start with the board members' comments. As Dr. Maldonado said, excited about starting in back-to-school night. I had the pleasure of going to Santa Barbara High School and seeing the Dawns and their team. Dr. Simmons, who was there, gave an excellent presentation to all these excited parents that are, their kids are going back to school and trying to figure out, you know, feeling like students again as they're running, going from one class to the other to meet their teachers. I also want to give a special shout-out to Maria Jimenez, who shared information with us, had a lot of resources there, and was all set up and organized. We got our Santa Barbara High School Dawn t-shirts ready for the next football game. I also had the, and I was there with, let's see, with Ms. Alvarez and with Ms. Sims Moten and Dr. Maldonado, and let's see, and then I, and several of our Cabinet members were there too. Also, at Washington School, I had the pleasure of a great presentation by Ariel Curry, who gave a presentation to the parents, and also, you know, just excited to be there in person instead of the virtual, you know, meetings. We were all cautious, and Cavia was there to join us, and Stanley Monroe was there and accompanied me and welcomed us there too. So very excited about, you know, going out to starting the tours of the campus. So we do have Ms. Kate Ford and Ms. Wendy Sims Moten on Zoom, so I'd like to give them the opportunity. Ms. Kate Ford, would you like to make comments?
Sure. Thank you so much. Well, good evening to everyone. I'm sorry that I'm going to miss being there in person, but I do have some information and gratitude to share with you. First of all, welcome, Mr. Ramirez. We're very, very grateful that you joined us, and wow, congratulations, Ms. Stevens, how lucky La Cumbre is to have you and how lucky you are to be at La Cumbre. From all accounts, the school year's off to an excellent start. I so appreciate the effort of our teachers, staffs, and administrators on making 2022, '23 one of the best years ever, and it's been done while struggling with very, very hot weather. So I must double and actually triple my admiration and appreciation. It is one thing to be hot, sweaty, and uncomfortable personally, but to try to teach and conduct school business with 30 other hot and sweaty people in the room, that's true heroism. So many, many thanks. As is my job, I also want to share the Board email report, since these emails are considered to be public comment too. So in the period from August 23rd to today, we received the following emails. One about the school calendar, two about personnel issues, five, all from the same community member, about concerns about COVID testing of students. The Board response and teacher union response to the pandemic, we received four emails. Co-seeding in high school, one, student sports, one, student achievement, one, student mental health, one, and support for the upcoming tonight Board Resolution about Disability Week, 15 emails, as well as, I think, 12 announcements and other invitations to the Board. Finally, I do want to mention serious subject, and that is that last week was National Suicide Prevention Week. It's an important time of the year when we can focus on educating and informing the general public about suicide prevention and the warning signs of suicide. But we need to do this all year round, and we, as a Board and as a school district, have stated our priority of focusing on mental health, in particular, student mental health. So what can we do? We need to continue to raise awareness and reduce the stigma around it so that more and more people feel comfortable to reach out for help. We need to educate each and every one of ourselves so that we can facilitate proactive prevention in our communities, and we need to really look out for others and check for warning signs. The American Foundation for Suicide Prevention sponsors Out of the Darkness walks across the country in the fall, and Santa Barbara's this year is on November 12th, so please stay tuned for more information. And that's it for me. President Munoz.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Ms. Sims Moten?
Good evening, everyone, coming in, speaking in from the box. Sorry, I can't be there in person, but I'm so grateful for this technology that allows me to be with you this evening. So yes, I just want to echo the comments of both President Munoz as well as Ms. Ford with regards to congratulating you, Ms. Stevens, and welcome to the Santa Barbara Unified School District and your recognition. And certainly with the Harding Hawks, thank you so much. Ms. Binkley, with regards to those Harding Hawks, I was there at your back-to-school night, so all the energy that was there, as well as welcoming Mr. Ramirez. Thank you so much for being here, our Chief Technology Officer here. We're so glad and welcome you to what we hope will be a great place as we looking at technology and all the questions that are rounding, surrounding technology. But I want to say the back-to-school nights have been so energizing, they were exciting to be a part of there. It's almost like being at a football game, all the energy that was there. And I had a chance to talk to several parents as we walked through the club. I called it a club market because, DP, I was walking through all these clubs that the student clubs are there, and they were there representing, and I was trying to make sure that I knew when they were going to have a meeting, so I'm excited to maybe go to attend some of the meetings because they're all doing great work there, and we want to make sure that we're elevating the work that the students are doing. And so I'm looking forward to getting a schedule of coming to the Board of all the club meetings and their dates, and hopefully, part of our tours, we're able to come and be and sit and have a minute with their, with their club. Also, I wanted to say for the early, you know, we have back-to-school nights for our elementary and our junior highs and our, our high schools. I want to advocate for our little early educators too, if we could have a back-to-school night. I don't want to add any extra work, but it was just good to see the early ones back there, what they're, they're coming back to school too and, and doing their part as well, so we'd love to see them as part of our back-to-school night as, as we do that. But I'm really energized by being part of those back-to-school nights. And also, I just wanted to say, just on another note, in terms of, as we are obviously in election season and we have new candidates coming to the Board, one will be appointed one through, through elections, and I wanted just to point out there's a potential Santa Barbara for candidate training for the Santa Barbara County Board of Education should be coming, I think the approximate date is September 21st. More to come on that. And also, there's one being sponsored by the Ventura County Office of Education, October 1st, and we'll get that out, so make sure that you are knowing what to do. I think it's very important as we to be trained and understand what it is to be a Board member, so those are upcoming trainings that I hope that you're able to take advantage of. And then, lastly, I just, this is not for anyone to do any work, it's just that I was just hearing it, that Governor Newsom signed a bill with regards to online tutoring, and I'm just wondering how that may impact us in terms of tutoring that we provide as a district and also the fact that it's online. You know, we've been talking about how we balance screen time, so this is another place where there would be a lot of screen time if it's going to be offered online, but just something to think about how that may impact us as a district. And lastly, I am attending a leadership conference where I'm not able to be there in person, but as, as Ms. Ford talked about, the mental health and the suicide awareness as we do this, one thing that stuck to me today during this conference was one of the leaders were saying about how we, every, there's something going on with everybody, and we just need to, in this day and time, we need to recalibrate our capacity to do the things that we're supposed to do. And when we, when we recalibrate, that, that also elevates awareness and people being able to talk about that. And so I know that we have in our consent agenda, save an employee. I think that's, as part of recalibration, is really looking at our capacity to do, to do our jobs in the best way that we can, and also making sure that we are nurturing and creating a culture of care. So again, thank you for allowing me to share my comments and hope you have, and welcome everybody this evening. Thank you, President.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sims Moten. Ms. Cabs?
Thank you, President Munoz. And Dr. Maldonado, thank you for starting off this meeting with a moment of silence for 9/11. I was honored to be asked by CADA to participate in a county celebration or commemoration, I should say, of the anniversary, and I need to just share, the most moving part about it was the involvement of our students. Many of our students were part of this commemoration in the most meaningful ways. We had students reading letters of gratitude to all of the first responders who were representative there, county fire, city fire, police, and these, this one student in particular, I was able to introduce, her name was Cameron DePaco. She's at La Colina. She read this beautiful letter of gratitude, and then other students had collected letters of gratitude. Other students came up who were involved with Teen Court, which is a really important county program in rehabilitation, and they read names of the fallen. And, and it just, as I listened, I thought to myself, this is really the edict and the pledge, "Never forget" in action, because these are kids who were not even alive of 9/11, yet in 9/11, America is, post-9/11, America is all that they know. And if they are, if they thanked to their parents and programs like Teen Court and CADA and our schools are instilled with these patriotic values, that means that their children are likely going to have these values as well, and truly, we will not forget the meaning of 9/11. So just wanted to express that because I was so proud, once again, of our So just wanted to express that because I was so proud, once again, of our students. And one of the, back to the correspondence and thanks to Ms. Ford for always doing such a good job tallying and reporting out. One that caught my eye was a student wrote us, a student and his mother wrote us about voter registration week next week. Voter Registration Education Week is next week. Super important from our Secretary of State information. You can go on their website. All 16 and 17-year-olds can pre-register so that when you do turn 18, you're automatically set to vote in the next elections. And all studies show that if kids start voting at age 18, that they become voters for life. And we all know with all of the efforts out there to keep people from voting, that we need to start educating. So I was happy to hear from that student, Garrett Williams, a sophomore at Santa Barbara High School and his mother. And I responded saying, tell me more, tell me how I can help. So I'm excited to read about that. And just want to share in the congratulations to Kendall Stevens. Thanks for doing the work that you do. It really warms our heart to know that this generation of Stevens is keep going on. And I don't mean to define you by your parents. I certainly know about that. So I just want to, my hat, my hat goes off to you for all of the work that you're doing. And welcome to Tony Ramirez. Really good to see you here, Chief Technology Officer. What a time to be helping us decipher the use of technology in our schools. It's, there's so much promise, but there's some perils. And I look forward to your expertise on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cows. Thank you. Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. First of all, I want to thank my colleagues, board members. I, it's such a pleasure to work with all of you. And I am so grateful for the work that each of you do to this board. We all have different strengths, sometimes different opinions. And at the end of the day, we're all working for the same purpose, for the best of our students, our staff. And I'm truly, truly honored and grateful to work with all of you. So thank you. Thank you very much. And besides that, I, do you remember that book, Brown Bear, Brown Bear, What Do You See? I, I remember that. I used to read that to my kids and, and stuck with me because going back to school night, going back to school night, I saw teachers that are engaged. I saw parents that are respectful, that are interested. I saw principals passionate telling us about their school. And that made me so, so proud. It filled my heart. Mr. LaBerge gave me a call and said, tell me about the district. And I said, where can I start? Where can I start to tell you about all the wonderful things that I have seen? I, I was at La Colina Junior High. I was at Dos Pueblos High School. I was at Harding Elementary, Santa Barbara High School in San Marcos. I hope I didn't forget anybody. It's been a busy couple of weeks. And what I have learned, as Ms. Binkley said, I have learned how to be a millionaire. I have learned that I have to read every single day so that I can achieve that goal. And also Ms. Binkley will adopt me to make sure that I reach that goal. So that was something very enlightening. I also learned about AP European History at San Marcos High School last night. And I also learned about Avid classes at the junior high and high school level at La Colina and Santa Barbara High. And I also learned some good vibes at Dos Pueblos. So there's really, really good things happening out there. And I'm so grateful to the teachers, Ms. Adrianson, as the leader of our, our teachers' union. So grateful for all the amazing professionals that I saw and our classified staff, all the work that they do to make this happen. And of course, our principals, assistant principals and everyone else that makes this happen. So thank you to all of you. And I look forward to more back to school nights next week. And also talking about mental health. There's a great resource, calhope.org, that has wonderful, excellent resources about mental health, awareness, suicide and crisis. And it's just, I shared this with Dawson, our former student board member, who's very much interested in this. But there's, it's an excellent resource. So hopefully this can be maybe a link on our website as resources for people out there that are looking for this. So thank you.
Yes. And then I'd like to have our student board member comment. Cavia?
Good evening, everyone. It's really nice to see you all here today. I just want to echo what everyone's already been saying. We've been having a really awesome time going and seeing all the schools in action and seeing all the teachers and staff members and administrators. Everyone's so excited for the school year. And I think that positive and radiant energy is really going to carry, carry all of us forward. And I'm really grateful that I had the opportunity to go and see some schools and learn more about how they're doing this year and what their plans are for the rest of the year. So it's been really nice to see and return back to some of my old schools too. And I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Stevens again. I was an ASB in junior high and I know it is not easy at all to be an ASB advisor of a bunch of junior high students. The ideas are all over the room and you really have to figure out what is going to, you know, be the best for everybody. And you really do like transform leadership. So thank you so much for the work that you do. It means a lot to everybody and I can't wait to see where all of your students go. And also thank you, Principal Binkley, for your presentation. I think it is so incredible to see such a revolutionary school like Harding, honestly. You know, prioritizing literacy and prioritizing early education, especially, you know, when we've come from a year of like learning online and we've had so many learning deficits and difficulties there. It's so important that, you know, our school environment promotes healthy learning and healthy access. So thank you so much for your presentation on that. And updates from me now. We are going to start outreach to get students to join our superintendent advisory council. So our superintendent advisory council is a group of about 30 students who come from all of the different high schools. And we just advise a superintendent, I guess, to keep it concise. And it's really valuable for both me and Dr. Maldonado to hear what the concerns are of students who come from such different groups and diverse backgrounds, especially because no one, no two students have the same high school experience. And we're hoping to somehow expand our, I guess, reach this year to junior high in any capacity that we can. I also did want to mention, as someone who is going to school every day, the Off and Away Campaign has been up and running, at least at San Marcos. And I know from Isa and Emily, the other representatives at DPNSB as well. And it has been really successful for them. And it's really allowed us to finally be grounded and be in touch with our reality and our environment, which I think is so important because sometimes it feels like technology is a whirlpool and we all get sucked in. So it's been really inspiring and also just enlightening to have that break and learn more about the people in my class and, you know, figure out that we're a lot more common than we actually think. And I attended a CSBA training, California School Board Association Training for Student Board Members, and I got to meet student board members from across the state. Some districts, I learned, have had student board members for the past 10 years. Some have not had them for even one full year. So it's been really, really cool to meet them. I'm still connected with some of them today. So it's awesome that I have a community now that I can rely on. And I also do want to commemorate that this week is National Arts and Education Week. And I know that the arts program here at all the schools in SB Unified is truly phenomenal. And I know that every student involved in the arts is, is so talented and so unbelievably gifted. And everyone is definitely going to, you know, be able to carry that passion forward for the rest of their life. So I'm really appreciative of all of our arts teachers and all of our arts instructors at this district for inspiring all of us to be creative and find our inner artist. And finally, I do want to recognize Suicide Prevention Week. And as everyone has already been saying, it's not enough to recognize it. We have to address it and we do have to act on it. You know, it's okay not to be okay, but it's not okay to let others be not okay. And so I think it's time that we, you know, stop shying away from topics that make us uncomfortable. It's time that we stop, you know, dismissing signs of severe depression, anxiety, mental illness, as teenagers being hormonal or teenagers being, you know, angsty or having attitude. As a survivor of suicide myself, it's a lot more difficult and complicated than people might assume. And I think adults do have a huge responsibility and a huge role to play in being that rock and being that pillar for students and for youth that need it in your life. And I definitely would not be here today without the support of adults in the education system. So you all play such a big role in every single student's life. And, you know, just don't take that for granted and really recognize that every action, every word, every behavior that you have makes an impact. And it's just important that we continue having these conversations and we continue allowing people to be vulnerable and not seeing it as a weakness, but seeing it as a strength to confide in others. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to learning more about what else, what else is going on in our school at this meeting.
Gosh, thank you, Cavia. Thank you so much. I would like to have Dr. Maldonado, who also has more to share.
Thank you all. And yes, we are now ready. We put our little fire here. I'm going to have Oscar bring up our Heroes of the Heart campaign. And the, the purpose of the Heroes of the Heart campaign is to really give us an opportunity to recognize each other, the values we've identified for Santa Barbara Unified, our community, respect, integrity and trust that are the values we really want to shape the behaviors and ways that we work together under the overall theme of we are unified. So with that, the first nomination or the next nomination that came in, next slide, please, is the Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team. They were nominated by Kendra Weiss and she said, "We have deeply appreciated the long-term strategic thoughtful, caring and responsive interactions we've had with the staff over the past school year, '21, '22, and the beginning of the '22, '23 school year." Thank you, Dos Pueblos High School Counseling Team. Next slide, we have our teacher Amanda Thorpe from McKinley Elementary School, nominated by Emily Young, who said, "She can often be heard in the halls flipping back and forth between Spanish and English with students. She comes up with very creative ways to engage the littlest of our students who may be nonverbal, anxious or missing their parents. Amanda's busy all day long, but never seems to lose her patience, her ability to make each student feel unique and seen." Next, also nominated by Emily Young is Emma Sarmiento. "During the height of COVID chaos last year, Emma remained calm, patient and steady as she bore the brunt of testing students, contacting parents, collaborating with the front office and teachers. We are so lucky to have her in the health office at McKinley. She's a huge asset to the school." And this one threw me off, the next one. And this is where reading matters and why I care so much about reading. We had three slides with the same quote and three different people. And reading comprehension involves reading and making meaning with pictures and text. So it threw me completely off. And my team was kind enough to rearrange the pictures for me. And here is the quote. "It is a nomination by Eva Samudio. Kimberly Urutia is very friendly. She works with our school at Adams, Ortesia Corral, along with Ortesia Corral. Mrs. Brown, our teacher, is a great advocate for our school at Adams. And she's just very grateful that all three of them are there." Sorry, I'm translating because it's in Spanish. That's part of what happens with the bilingual brain too, by the way. Reading, translating and making meaning with reading comprehension. And even at my age, we can still have trouble reading. That's why you should always keep it up. So next slide, I'm using myself as an example. "Nominated by Maria Longbreak, Melissa Lopez from Galida Junior High School. On the second day of school, my son, a new seventh grader, and I walked into the office. In the midst of a busy Monday morning, Melissa stopped what she was doing, came right over to us and helped us figure things out. She was so warm and welcoming and totally erased any stress, I mean, from the situation in that moment." Next, we have Ricardo Mata Vazquez, also from Galida, also nominated by Maria Longbreak. "I had a few more questions that Ricardo made a point of personally addressing our scheduling requests as he knew it was a simple fix that didn't require adding or changing anything. And the counselors were inundated. He alleviated our concerns right away." Next, some of you may recognize her because we've recognized Rosa Cavaletto in the past for her years of service in our school district, nominated by Gillette Hall. "She's run Washington Elementary School for so long that she's now welcoming the children of the children she knew at school when she first started. From the moment we walked in the office with our incoming first grader to the day he graduated this June, Rosa has been our friend, advisor and helper." Thank you, Rosa. And Melissa Sheldon at La Colina Junior High School, nominated by Celanch Sanuesa. "Melissa went above and beyond to find the right math class for my son. In a small window's time of time, she spoke to high school administrators and to La Colina Math Department, set up assessments and finally was able to place my son in the right class. We are grateful to her and she is our hero." And last, nominated by Melissa, Debbie Landis and the Dos Pueblos Cheer Team. Debbie Landis, Landis and her team brought a cute welcome sign and a box of licorice over to Nordhoff's cheerleaders during the game, which I believe it was Rose Munoz and Wendy Sims-Moten. I promise I'm almost done. At halftime, they invited them over to the DP side to watch the performance arm in arm, we got to see that, and even do a big jump, jump circle together. When the squad returned, they said that Dos Pueblos cheerpeople were so kind, nice. And all the Nordhoff High School girls said, we want to transfer to Dos Pueblos. So yes, they're all welcome. We want to increase our enrollment. But all that to say, board members, it's so important for me to read this out loud. And yes, we're going to eventually have this as part of our website. But I just want to again speak to this theme of we are unified. But more than anything, the values of Santa Barbara Unified being community, respect, integrity and trust that really shapes the behaviors and it's demonstrated here, as you can see by many employees, our students and many others. And it becomes infectious. So thank you for allowing me the extra time, Board President Munoz.
Of course. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. And congratulations to the, all the honorees. You could, you could see it. You could feel it when you walk on campus. And we, you know, had the pleasure to be there with the DP cheerleaders. I've also felt that warmth with the San Marcos and Santa Barbara High cheerleaders when we had our event for the teachers about a month ago, already a month ago. I'd also like to, I'd like to congratulate the retirees. And as Dr. Maldonado said, you know, every day, how many times have these folks done something for our students and their families? There is Abdallah Jahadmi, athletics director at San Marcos High School with 25-plus years at our district. And also Maria Aguirre at Franklin, at Franklin School with 29 years plus of service. So congratulations to those honorees and in, you know, sincere agradezida. Oh gosh, now I'm doing the same thing. Grateful for them, for what they have done for our district. Thank you. And now we will go to public comments on non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education.
Yes, President Munoz, we just have three members of the public that wish to speak during this agenda item. The first is in person, Ms. Leslie Sanderson. You're welcome to come up to the podium. And the next two are virtual if they're joining us. And that's Jennifer Williams and Roseanne Crawford.
Hi, Leslie Sanderson, mother of a student receiving special education services at San Marcos High School. And I just wanted to bring up, I bring this up every year usually, that we're still low on paraeducators in all of the school district. And I want everybody to be aware that this is a significant issue. Kids, kids in special education aren't going to their general ed classes. Kids in special education are not having their IUPs implemented at this point. And these teachers and these paraeducators in these classes are working really, really hard. That's why we lose paraeducators every year. They're overworked. They don't have enough help. So I'm just coming to implore that the board encourage the HR department. I think there've been some really good strides in the years past of hiring private contract companies to do so. I know there's one on the board agenda tonight. They have Star Services as well. But I'm just hoping that you take these things seriously because kids are not getting their IUPs implemented. Kids are at risk. So just wanted to make that in. I'm happy to email the board with some specific details if you're interested. that. And I'm happy to email the Board with some specific details if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have Jennifer Williams joining us virtually if she's ready.
For member caps, Ms. Williams is not online, so.
Okay, well, let's see if she joins while we're still on this agenda item. How about Roseanne Crawford?
Yes, Ms. Crawford is online. A minute.
Ms. Crawford, you can begin. Three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Great. I'm Roseanne Crawford, and I'm a candidate for Santa Barbara County Board of Education, Trustee Area One. This evening, I want to give my sincere thanks and appreciation for Board Member Ms. Ford's years of service to this district. She is the one Board Member that always has acknowledged emails, returned emails, sometimes writes a thoughtful response or comment. I like that she's had thoughtful comments and questions during Board meetings, looked at both sides, and listened to both parents and teachers, not just a rubber stamp for this Board and administration. Ms. Ford, you are a role model, and your professionalism, sensitivity, and boldness will be missed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Adriana, do we have our other speaker? Okay, then, President Munoz, that concludes public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Caps. At this time, we will go on to the Consent Agenda to approve the items that are considered routine and not likely to require any discussion. Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the Board approves all the consent agenda. I'm sorry. I know that there's one item that's gonna be polled.
Can you give that to, can you pass that to the rest of the Board members?
Oh, sure, of course.
So, Board members, for this item, under the Consent Agenda number 14, we will be pulling from that list the travel to the Leadership Institute that's highlighted in front of you, for Teachers College, for both the Leadership Institute and the Teacher Reading and Writing Project. We are launching our Literacy Task Force in the coming weeks, as I sent my note to the Board yesterday. And we want to determine the best course of action before we continue with the conference attendance, along with starting our Instructional Materials Committee around the reading program. So that's why we're pulling this item.
Okay, so just to clarify, these two are being polled, however, the others are, okay, perfect, would remain. Okay, the Board has, oh, go ahead.
Oh, President Munoz, we have one request for public comment about Consent Agenda Item E12.
Yes, okay, so go ahead, Ms. Caps. Thank you for letting me know.
Sure. Mr. Dan LaBerge, you're welcome to come to the podium. You've got three minutes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to commend the Board and President, or excuse me, Principal Kilgore for their efforts. I'm sorry?
You can raise the mic a little bit if you like.
Thank you so much. Just to commend their efforts to seek educational opportunities outside the classroom, and their partnership with the Guided Discoveries, to take many of our children on the Lower East Side, where my children attend school, to take them and experience the Maritime Institute at Catalina. These create incredible memories and experiences for our children. Unfortunately, my eldest child was left out of the SEME adventure that was planned for their sixth grade opportunity because of COVID. And all he and his classmates were so heartbroken, and still speak to it today, that they missed out on that. These educational opportunities leave lifelong memories, and especially when they introduce them to aspects of science and our environment, really change their futures. So I want to thank you all.
Thank you. That concludes public comment on Consent Agenda items.
Okay, so we will go ahead and, you know, the, as I was about to say, the Board has had the opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. And, let's see, okay, so I will ask if there's a motion to, on the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as, as presented with the items polled. Thank you.
And I second. Okay, sorry. So, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to the public hearing. Let's see. No, actually. Right, so we will go on to the Action Agenda, Item Number One, the resolution.
No, that's connected to number, to the public hearing, sorry.
No, right, three?
Number three.
Okay, okay, apologies all. Number three, approval of the 2021-22 Fiscal Year Unaudited Actuals. Thank you. We're getting so good at this. We're having this at whatever time it is, and it's not 10 o'clock at night. This is amazing. You guys are awesome. Okay, so this is the, I should just start with, "Good evening, Board Members," Dr. Maldonado. So what we're gonna do tonight, it was, we are going to talk about the 21-22 Unaudited Actuals. This report is, it really tells a fiscal story about what we all experienced last year. And it's a very interesting story. So, I don't need to tell all of you, but 21-22 was the year that we were fully in person during a global pandemic. COVID caused staffing shortages in every department, in every school. We had bus driver shortages, and we had to be very creative in our ways to get students to school. We had challenges in ordering supplies and materials due to supply chain problems that affected the entire nation. We had difficulties with our contracts, because our vendors too had supply chain issues and staffing problems. We had extra unforeseen costs in PPE and air filters and all the other things that we had to scramble to deal with last year. So it was a very challenging year, to say the least. But I just want to say thank you to all the Santa Barbara Unified employees, all of the staff, because we all rose to the challenge. We all did our job and other people's jobs. We all really worked hard, and we did a lot, and I'm very grateful to all of you. So, going forward, in this budget, you'll see how all of these things that occurred last year actually affected how we ended up in the school year, in our budget. We call this budget "Unaudited Actuals" because our auditors have not completed their fine-toothed comb picking through our numbers yet. They will start that in the first week of October, and we will get a report from them in December. So, we look forward to that, and let's go on to the, the next, let's go on to the slides, actually. Can we do that? I think we were so early getting up here that nobody was ready. Unaudited actuals. Technical difficulties. Good. Thank you. Yep, that's it. Great. So, next slide, please. Okay, this is the calendar of our budget dates. Board Member Alvarez had asked for us to put together a list of our budgets and when they occur, so that we can all just be ready for them and understand when they are. So, our first review of budget occurred in June of this last, this last June, for the adopted budget for 22-23 school year. So where we are right now is the, it's kind of a light green, Unaudited Actuals for 21-22. And it's this Board Meeting tonight, and it's due to the CDE. We have to turn it in by September 15th. So as always, we are right on time. So, one thing that I want to say about this is, our adopted budget are always our very most conservative budgets. We need to make them conservative in order to alleviate risk and cash flow problems for our district. So it always starts out with a budget that is conservative, and also includes everything in it that we expect to happen in a, in a school year. Everything is budgeted that we expect to happen. So, in a COVID year, as we know, things are not always as, as we expect. So, this Unaudited Actuals, then, what this is, is where we actually ended up at the end of 21-22. So, all of the other budgets that you see there are projected budgets. They are estimates. We estimate how much revenue we're gonna receive, because we don't know how much our property taxes are going to be for the year until the end of the year. We estimate expenditures based usually on what we are used to experiencing, what we've historically spent, what we expect to spend. And so, every single review that we have up until Unaudited Actuals are projections. Actuals are actuals. They are where we are. It's what we have received for revenue, and it is what we have received, what we have paid for the year. So, for example, we had been projecting property taxes to be a four-and-a-half percent increase from the prior year. And we got to the end of the year, and we were very happy to have our secured property taxes be 4.8%. So it went up. We also know that our actuals, because of all the things that I mentioned at the beginning of this, were different. Mostly, they were less. So, let's see what else we want to say about that. That's it for that slide. Let's go on to the next slide. So we have updates in funding sources and in expenditures. We have received $54.7 million in COVID funding, and to date, we have spent $26 million of that. So, what that means, we still have time to, to continue to spend the funding, and we do have plans to do so. But any COVID revenue that is not spent in this current year of 21-22 will need to be spent in the subsequent years until we get to 2024. Lacey will show you, our Director of Fiscal, will show you all the fine details, including the reserves and the ending fund balance in the next slides. But before we get there, I want to share with you some happy news. We are not deficit spending in our budget for this 21-20 school year, which means that our revenues for the 21-22 school year exceed our expenditures. So we ended up with a surplus. When we started the adopted budget in June of last year, we were projecting that we would have a deficit. But we ended up at the end of the year with a surplus, because of all the things that we talked about before. There's a lot there that we, you know, you, you budget the best way that you can, but in a COVID year, things go out the window. So there's another thing that I would like to tell you, is that we are reporting a positive certification, which is the best report available for school budgets. And I will now turn it over to Lacey.
Thank you, Kim. If we can go on to the next slide. All right, this slide is our unrestricted and restricted revenues. On the left side, you can see what we estimated. And on the right side, you will see how we actually ended the year. As Kim mentioned, in the blue area, our property taxes came in higher than we originally estimated. We also received more state aid. And finally, in that blue area, we did not have to pay the Olive Grove Charter School as much as we had originally estimated, because their ADA decreased. And we pay them based on their average daily attendance. The next section I'm gonna talk about is federal revenue. That's in red. And that, you'll see there that that decreased. With federal revenue, anything that we don't spend by the year end is decreased and then projected in the next school year. So we can only report revenue earned for what we have spent. In the next section, the yellow section, state revenue, this works, the decrease here is similar to the decrease in the federal revenue for various programs that we receive CTE funding for, and also the in-person instruction grant. We did not spend all of those funds, and so the revenue was decreased, and we will record the revenue when we spend the funds next year. The final section is our other local revenue. This included increases in Civic Center, and donations, dual enrollment, and our Restricted Redevelopment Agency funds. And we'll now go to the next slide. This is our unrestricted and restricted expenditures, similar to the last slide. We have our estimates on the left and our actuals on the right. In the blue area, that is our salary and benefits. As previously mentioned, we experienced lots of staffing shortages this year. That included teachers, custodians, paraeducators, and various other staff. So that is why you see the decrease there in salaries, as well as the benefits that go along with those salaries. In the red, we have books and supplies. Seventy-five percent of that decrease is on the restricted side of the budget. So all of those funds will carry over to the next school year to be spent. It's also similar in the yellow area, the services and operating. Seventy-seven percent of that decrease is also on the restricted side, and those funds will carry over to the next year to be spent. In all other expenditures, that includes capital equipment, which we spent less on, tuition payments to other agencies, which were higher than we estimated, lease payments, which came in lower, and indirect costs, which came in higher. We can go to the next slide. This slide shows our changes in contribution, contributions and transfers. There are generally three areas that require contributions or transfers from the General Fund, because they are not fully funded on their own. The first one is the contribution to special education, and this happens every year. We receive funding for special education from the federal and state government, but it does not cover all of our special education costs. Therefore, the General Fund has to contribute. Here you can see that we contributed less than what we thought, and that was a difference of 2.5 million. This is due to additional funding that we received from Selpa, and a decreased cost in regional programs. The next item you see there is a transfer to our Fund 12 Child Development Program. This funding is based on, again, attendance. So this year, the attendance was not high enough to, to generate the revenues needed to cover all of the costs, and that's why you see the contribution here. The one contribution that you don't see this year is the contribution to our Cafeteria Fund 13. They received enough funding with also help from our ESAR funds to cover all of their costs. And we'll go to the next slide. So as I mentioned before, Food Service received some federal funding, which you'll see here. This is our federal and state relief funding slide. This is our federal and state relief funding slide, and this is what we've, this is the funding that we've spent for 2122. The first column is instructional-based funding that was spent, and this includes additional teachers that were hired to reduce class sizes. It also includes dedicated subs that we had at every school site to cover, to cover staff shortages. This is also where we funded the Summer of Learning program. And next, I'll go on to the counseling column here. We hired additional counselors. We also hired additional youth outreach workers. And we also paid for additional mental health services to support all of our students and staff. You can see we also spent some federal and state relief funding on student transportation, PPE, cleaning and safety. In the other general administration column, the funding here was used to help hire additional HR, ETS, and purchasing staff to hire all of these additional staff and to make all of the additional purchases needed for COVID. The instructional support and administration column, in there, we hired additional staff to help with the multi-tiered system of support, MTSS. And each site also hired additional clerical and office staff to help with COVID-related items like testing and reporting and everything that came up during last year. That was unexpected. And we'll go to our next slide. As Kim already mentioned, we did end the year with a surplus. That surplus totaled 7.1 million. And that is why you see an increase in our reserves for the 2122 school year. In the purple section, the middle section, that is our restricted surplus. In that area, we had a surplus higher than we expected in restricted lottery, in state child nutrition, and also in local donations. A full list of all of those items that are included in the restricted surplus can be found on page 40 of the narrative. And all of those balances will be carried over to the next year, and we will project to spend them then. The unrestricted surplus that we had this year will help with any deficit spending that we may have going forward in the future years. And that concludes our slides, and we can open it up to any public comment or questions from the board.
Thank you. Is there a public comment?
No, there is not.
Okay. Thank you. Board, do you have any questions or comments? And I'll start with Ms. Simms-Moulton.
Yes, thank you, President Munoz. Thank you, Ms. Kim and Lacy for that wonderful presentation. And I just want to say, yes, there's a few positives that we can take away from here. It's, it's before dark time that we're actually getting the audits presented to us today. So that's, that's a positive thing. We're usually at the end of the day doing that, so that's good. Secondly, also more importantly, is the fact that we are presenting a positive certification for the year. That is really great news, and I know that that just doesn't happen by happenstance. There may be a little miracle-ness in it, but it was many things happening together to have that come to that conclusion. And so, thank you so much for presenting that and working on that. The only question that I have is that I, this is good news about the positive balance that we have. The question I have is, does it or did it result in something not being done, services not being provided? Was there any negative impact to student services?
The answer is maybe. You know, there is, there were a lot of staff shortages, but in a lot of cases, we all just covered for each other. We did, there are things such as conferences that people didn't get to go to, but then we had a lot of things on Zoom, you know? So it's kind of looking at, at the positives that came from all of that. That where we had some shortages, you know, the bus driving shortages, we were able to, to recover and get kids to school. So, I'm not sure exactly each individual detail where we may have not been able to provide services, but I know we provided a lot of services, and we all, you know, really stepped up and helped each other and, you know, protected our kids, educated our kids, and kept them in person.
Yeah, well, that's the most important part, not that I need to know every detail of where the savings were, but in general, just if there wasn't a large or negative impact, and it doesn't seem that obviously that it, that it was. And so appreciated even the work and the flexibility and all the hard work you had to put in at the end with regards to the student transportation, we were able to do that. So, all that's very, very, very much appreciated. And just always want to make sure, and you do, making sure that, that when there potentially could be negative impacts, that just the hard work you go into really making sure that minimized as much as they can. So appreciate that. Thank you.
If I may add to your question, Ms. Simms-Moulton, we did have a lot of our district office staff cover classrooms last year because we also had a shortage of substitutes during the year. And I want to just give all our employees who did step out of their roles into other roles to cover so that students had fully certificated teachers in their classrooms, so that children were driven to school and back by our own employees. So there was a lot of ways that people went above and beyond their regular jobs to cover for that so that students didn't miss out. But to our earlier speaker's point, we also continued to have challenges in hiring paraeducators and others in certain categories, teachers of math, teachers of special education. So I want to just mark that that continues to be a need for our school district like many others.
And I would just add, thank you. That's also kind of what I'm hearing up here as well in terms of that, that's just happening across, you know, just across the world in terms of just the charges that were happening, coming back, and just people, again, just figuring out how they're just going to exist differently in this world that just changed us all. And so I, again, I also want to extend the appreciation for everyone that did things outside their role to ensure that our students were the first and foremost, that they had, that, that, that their needs were met. So much appreciated to that. So thank you again for adding that to Dr. Maldonado.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. And I do appreciate the comments made by Ms. Hernandez and Dr. Maldonado. But of course, every opening, every unfilled position, no matter how much we try to mitigate the damage, I think it's really important that we still focus on that. I am delighted that the reserve is definitely healthy compared to hundreds of other districts across the state. But I, I just want to restate my own, and I'm sure I speak for the board, our own dedication to filling those positions so every child has what they need across the district. I liked in the executive summary that you referred to our need to be, continue to be conservative and flexible. I think those are bywords that we can live by. And I also just wanted to mention for the benefit of the community that the board, as you might remember, last June committed to holding a budget study session, which would be open to the staff and open to the public. And I'm very excited to set a date for that. Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Camp?
I just have a quick question because mental health is so important. And thank you to our student board member, caveat for always bringing that up as our previous board member Dawson Kelly did as well. Can you, I just think, I would like to have the number in my head. Do you know it? How many mental health counselors have we hired, roughly?
We added five additional counselors.
Five additional counselors. So how many would there be total? Again, I just think it's important for the community to grasp that this is
Phoning a friend.
A major, major priority for us.
Phoning a friend?
Again, I don't need the precise number, but Dr. Beckio, I would love to understand.
Well, I'm assuming that you're referring to in-house our own employees?
Yes.
Because we do have contracted services as well. So I don't have that number for you off the top of my head either, so I can bring that back?
Okay.
And get you some accurate information on that.
But I'm hearing five new ones with this, this relief funding.
And you're just talking mental health?
I am.
Counselors, not school counselors?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate the report. I just wanted to be an ambassador on this front because I do, it's a question that comes up so often, a concern for mental health of our students and the fact that we have resources that are new to us to be able to devote to that way. And just, again, this board and this district values the mental health profession greatly. And thank you for providing such good context today.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you, Ms., Lacy. Thank you so much. And to your, the rest of your team, you guys did an amazing job. This is so hard and so much work, so my appreciation and respect for you. And I only have a couple of questions. You've already answered the 12 that I sent you before, so thank you. And I really look forward to our budget study session because I know that you're going to cover all of this other details that are going to come up, especially about the multi-year projections that show deficit spending. I know that this is of great interest to our teachers, as it is for me as well and others. So I know that you will cover that. I do have a couple of just questions for you here. The additional federal and state funds that you had on the slide and that we added, all this staff and all this support, you don't have to answer tonight, but I'd like for us to start thinking, what's going to happen when that funding runs out? Because it's going to run out. I mean, one of the things that COVID did for us is it was horrible. It was terrible for everybody, and we received a lot of extra funding. So now what's going to happen when that runs out? So not that you have to answer tonight, but something for us to start thinking of what are we going to do, how are we going to continue supporting with this services and the impact to our budget? And I really liked what you wrote, Ms. Hernandez, on page 12. It is all of our responsibility to make sure that the district remains diligent in its monitor of expenditures to ensure that it remains solvent. That's our number one job as a board, to make sure that we remain solvent. So I appreciate that. I do have a request for the future. I know we have a hearing in two minutes. That in my back-to-school night's visits, I heard a lot about peak. So I would like sometime in the future that our finances, I like to know how that's funded. And I know that you mentioned it's part of the LCAP, and I understand it's part of the LCAP. I like to know the funding sources. How much of that is property tax? How much of that is state revenue, federal revenue? How much of that is donations? And how is that money being spent? So I, I, maybe that can be, I don't know, a separate agenda item, or that could be part of our budget study session. Somehow, I like to hear that incorporated in our financial reports since it's such an important program of our district. And I see that, I didn't see that in here. I couldn't find it in here in this, all these pages. I couldn't find it. So, bottom line, thank you very much for all your work, and I look forward to our budget study session.
Great. Thank you.
I had, sorry, I had a, I did have a question.
That's okay.
Apologies.
No, not at all. And I know it's, I just had a question, and I don't need the answer right now, but I was trying to, I was asked how much we receive for COVID, you know, for COVID, and then how much was spent, and if that's shown in the budget? And I made a note here. I know you said something, Ms. Hernandez, about 26 million?
Yes. So we've received all told 54.7 million of COVID relief funding, various, you know, various kinds, and we have spent 26.
Thank you so much. And that shows in the budget with transparency?
It's, it's combined in with all the other federal and state revenue that we receive, so it's not listed out anywhere separately, but we can add that to the next board report.
Actually, that's okay. I mean, having it, you know, stated and answered during our board meeting is fabulous. So that way I could also let the folks know that had asked me. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Okay, now it is 7:00 PM, and we will go on to our public hearing.
Ms. Munoz, do you need, Ms. Hernandez, do you need approval for the unaudited actuals?
Oh, my goodness.
I move that we approve the unaudited actuals as presented.
I second.
I can't even speak. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for the reminder. Okay, now we will go to the public hearing at 7:01 PM.
Dr. Maldonado, board members, at this time, I'd like to request that you open a public hearing for public comment on the agenda items for the two resolutions approval to adopt the study, to increase the fees, and to approve the sequin notice.
Okay. And do we have public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay.
If there's no public comment, then you can close the hearing and proceed to the resolutions.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for your guidance. Okay, now we will go to the number one of the action agenda, Adoption of Resolution Number 20222309 requesting the adoption, I'm sorry, 08, requesting the adoption of a developer fee justification study.
Thank you again, Dr. Maldonado, board members. Now that you've had your public hearing, before you can increase the developer fees, we're required to adopt a resolution to adopt the study. The board has authorized the study, and the district has complied with all of the requirements necessary for you to approve the resolution to adopt the study.
No public comments?
No.
Okay. Do I have a, oh, board members, do you have any questions or concerns? Oh, yes, Ms. Alvarez?
I know.
Okay. Ms. Simms-Moulton and Ms. Ford, any comments?
No, I was going to make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had one question, and if I missed it in the, in the background, I apologize. So I know this is the resolution so that we can, for justification of the study, I would just like to know, and maybe it comes out in the study, what would the additional funding be used for specifically with the increase?
For our, our Fund 25 is our developer fee fund, and by law, this fund is used for construction and reconstruction of school facilities. And it's restricted for those uses. And approving of projects out of this fund is at the discretion of the board.
Thank you. I think that's really important for the public to know that we're raising it's going to be used specifically for construction items. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Also, I think it's really important for the public to know that it's a, correct me, Mr. Hetjung, is it the State Board of Equalization that sets the rates?
Correct. The State Board of Equalization sets the rate every two years. Our district, two years ago, did not increase developer fees. So the jump may seem a little bit large because it's been four years since we've had a study and adjusted our fees instead of two years. Typically, we do it every two years. And the State Board of Equalization does that every two years. They adjust the amount based on inflation.
Thank you. So for us a board, we follow that guidance of the increases if we choose to.
If you choose to.
Yes. And I want to thank you for doing this report. I want to thank you for being diligent in trying to find revenue sources for our district, for our facilities. So my appreciation to Mr. Hernandez, you, and everyone else who was involved in doing this because this is so, so important to us. And as it was mentioned, our restricted funds, they're specifically for our facilities, for renovation, for addition, and as you know, we, we need to improve our facilities. We just saw teachers asking for AC, which would be about a $48 million expense. So this is, this is great. So thank you. My appreciation for doing that.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you so much. And Ms. Ford? And Ms. Ford, do we have a motion?
Yes, I need to turn my mic on. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-23-08 requesting the adoption of a developer fee justification study.
Second. Okay, board members, if, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And now we will go to number two, adoption of resolution number 2022-23-09.
Thank you again, Superintendent Maldonado, members of the board. This resolution raises the fees and authorizes adoption of a sequin notice of exemption. Fees imposed by school districts are exempt from SEQA, but we still have to file that notice, and on that notice, there is always a box that we check on whether we held a hearing or not on the item. And so we'll check the box that we did hold the hearing, and we'll submit that to the county office. Once you adopt this resolution, we will notify all the planning departments of the adoption, and the new fees will become effective 60 days after the date of adoption. And if you have any questions on the fees, I know that there was one item that's been discussed in that the rental self-storage fee amount has gone down, and that has gone down due to our student-teacher ratio. Our student-teacher ratio has become more in line with our other feeder districts, and so because that item is such a small amount and is very susceptible to that ratio, it's reduced now to a lesser amount.
Okay, thank you so much, and I'm assuming there's no public comment on this item? Okay. Board members, any comments on this, Ms. Ford?
I do not have a comment. I was going to make the motion.
Okay, any questions, comments, jokes?
I was going to make the motion.
Okay. So it's between Ms. Ford and Ms. Alvarez.
All right, then I will. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-23-09 requesting adoption of an increase in facilities fees and adoption of SEQA notice of exemption.
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, number four, Dr. Beckel, on the approval of leadership development contracts.
All right, good evening, Board President Munoz, board members, Superintendent Maldonado. I'm actually very excited to bring this item to you tonight. These are, this is an approval, an action item for approval of two contracts, but it's actually housed in this, in this item of a leadership development plan. And the reason I'm excited to bring it to you tonight is that I know that this board has been very adamant about the type of support, mentoring, and coaching that we're going to give our new leaders to our district. And in fact, every, I'll remind you that every hire we make, the question that, that you always ask as a board is, how are we supporting and coaching our new employees to the district or new employees to their positions? So we appreciate that. But I also want to, if you advance it to the next slide, I also want to provide this context to you as well. Because as we continue to implement the multi-tiered systems of support, we, I wanted to remind you of the column to the left that's highlighted in yellow, which is our administrative leadership. And this, this theory of action really does require the development of our administrative leadership. So it's not only something we know is really good for our employees that are new to us or new to positions, but it is also part of what we are doing as a district in, in terms of MTSS. So I wanted to make sure that you saw that. Just a couple highlights, I know I put the report in the item, but if you advance the slide, I'll, I'll just touch real quick, these were each of the opportunities that I listed in there. We have a coordinated plan with, with each of these items, and I wanted to just summarize real quick. The individualized leadership development, this is the space that these two contracts are coming to you under. So what we want to do is provide individualized leadership development, mentoring, coaching for our leaders that are new to our district or who are new to positions in our district. They might not be new leaders, but they're new to the position they're actually in. So the two contracts, and there will be more that come to you, are really under this individualized leadership development. If you, personnel management coaching, this is something that my department is engaged in all year long. There are a lot of employee issues that come up in, in leadership, and we are doing a lot of individualized coaching, team coaching around personnel issues. So this is something our department manages. Supervisory and mentoring evaluation, this really is our system of evaluation. However, I want to make a point to note that every school district has that. What we want ours to be is a true development, mentoring, and coaching within that process of our leaders. And so not only are we working on this with our leadership team at the district office, I'm also meeting with every site leadership team about evaluation of other classifications of employees to make sure it's a meaningful process and not just a compliance form that we have to fill out every year. Cultural relevance and responsiveness mentoring, we really want to target our three high school admin teams related to this topic. I'm working currently with Dr. Rios on identifying a service provider that can help these three teams with some of this mentoring and coaching. And then real-time support, we shouldn't forget that one of the strengths of our district is, I hear this all the time from people who come outside, from outside our district, is that when you call the cell phone of an assistant superintendent or the superintendent or a chief operations officer, the phone is answered. So when our principals are needing something, when our assistant principals call me, I pick up the phone and we provide real-time support. We're going to capital, continue to capitalize on that advantage. And then the last one, I put on a separate slide because it's really exciting, and I want to invite up Dr. Sheffield to just explain a little bit about the last opportunity we're providing.
Good evening, Board Presidents, School Board, Dr. Maldonado. I was really excited to be involved in this particular opportunity because I thought it was important to make sure that we are building new leaders and make sure we're building new leaders that are within the Santa Barbara area. And so we talked about building an aspiring leaders program that would include our teachers, deans, and assistant principals, and making sure they're prepared, getting real-time support and real-time learning from the cabinet members in regards into what it takes to be a good leader. And so we want to make sure we're building awareness, concepts of educational leadership. We're building that pool so that when we get into a place where we have a need, we have a large pool of individuals that are ready and willing to get out there and get into our schools. And then we've identified topics that are going to make sure that we are present and they can jump into their jobs and be effective. And so I thought this aspiring leaders program would definitely help us building our future leaders for this district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sheffield. And, and the topics that we have, that we will be planning for are housed in the report for the aspire leader, inspiring leaders program, and those actually will be facilitated by our very own leadership experts in those certain fields. So I think that actually concludes, is there another slide? I think the next slide just says questions that you might have. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. And just a reminder that the item is an approval of this particular leadership development plan, but, but it's approval of the two contracts that will provide the mentoring and coaching.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beckel. Any public comment?
No, I can let you know. Yeah.
Okay.
Most of them aren't.
Pardon?
Most, almost all of them aren't, so I can just let, I'll signal if they are.
Okay, awesome.
Thanks.
So yeah, so board members, any questions or concerns? Okay. Ms. Ford?
Sorry.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate this effort. I think it's extremely important, and I think the plans look exciting. I was thinking, as I read this over the weekend, about the new U.S. Open tennis champion, Carlos Alcaraz, from 19 years old from Spain, who is ranked number one in the world, and he has a coach. So there's all this talk, you know, about, oh, who, who gets a coach? They must be terrible if they have a coach. No. There's a great book out, I forget the author, but I, I think it's titled, You Don't Have To Be Sick to Get Better. And so every leader deserves the right to have a coach and the right to continue to be developed. And so thanks for this plan.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you, Dr. Beckel, for the report. I, as a learning organization, we are constantly looking of how we can do better, what we can do different, and part of that is acknowledging where we're at and what we need. And sometimes we're going to innovate, other times we're going to imitate, and then that's all okay. So having a mentor, a coach, I think it's a great idea. So thank you for bringing this plan. I did have a conversation with Dr. Beckel yesterday when I was reading the, the plan. In page two, in the first, I think it's, yeah, I think it's the, on the table, the first cell there in the table where it talks about what, what the mentoring will focus on for each individual leader, and one of those was self-care. And I said, Dr. Beckel, explain to me what you mean by that, because that's, that's very subjective. How would I explain that to someone who asks me, why is the district spending this money in teaching people how to self-care? So please, explain, explain our conversation.
Excellent. Yeah, if you, if you take a look at the, the two opportunities in particular, individualized leadership development, where we're going to have mentors, coaches work with those positions for those new leaders, and then, and then the supervisory mentoring and evaluation. I expect, actually, I know that one of the components of those coaching conversations is going to be about two things. The level of stress that their, the leader is experiencing in their current position, because these are very, very stressful positions, particularly when you're new to them. And the other is work-life balance. And so, and that just means, you know, are you balancing the work that you have to do and think about and emails and all that that comes with being a leader and life outside of work? And so those two conversations probably come up more than any other in all of my coaching sessions that I've done for the last four years, which is stress level of the job and what, you know, what kind of things can you do to alleviate that stress? And, and then how do I balance? How do I get a better balance? We talk about time management, I talk about calendaring, we talk about delegation of, of authority and shared decision-making and things like that that will really have an impact on work-life balance and the stress level of the job. So it's those two things. Was that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you, the, the work-life balance that we all achieve, we are looking to achieve. And then yesterday, I want you to know that I was in the Avid class for back-to-school night, and they actually answered my question partially, but you don't know this because you were not there. But the, the teacher said she was teaching her students about self-care. And what does that mean? That meant they would write down what habits they need to develop so that they can become better students, they can become better to themselves, including what you just said, basically the work-life balance, so that we can increase our retention, we can have healthy, happy employees who will be with us for a long time, and also set the example that you are important to. So thank you for that explanation.
Yep, for sure.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Beckel and Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Kepes?
I really appreciate Ms. Alvarez's question, and thank you for that answer. I just also wanted to comment on the process of your presentation because I, I really value the fact that you had two contracts for us to approve, but you gave us the context and, but also in a very succinct way. And our meetings have been, you know, actually ending much earlier than usual, and I just want to applaud the, the new cabinet and Dr. Maldonado for just an attention to these presentations that gives us, you know, the reason why we should vote for something very briefly. And I just appreciate that context, and I can tell how heartfelt it is, so I'm happy to support. Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Kepes. Excellent point. Ms. Sims-Fulton?
Thank you. I just want to echo all the comments of my sister board members, but again, at this leadership conference, that's really all the focus has been this, this day, was about self-care and, and not being, and not shying away from it. Because again, you know, through these two years, we have changed, as I stated earlier, about recalibrating who I am, who I am as a person, who we are as a district, right? And, and recalibrate our capacity to do so. And as we are part of that, it's part of creating, creating a culture of care and not being, because sometimes we get criticized, what do you mean by self-care? What, you're just, you're there to be paid to do a job. But when you, when you have the care of yourself and the care, you can care better for others when you care for yourself. So I, I'm really proud of this coming forward. I know we've been talking about it as a board, how are we going to care for folks who are coming to this district? How are we going to care for folks who are making transition to ensure that they feel good, they feel, they feel supported in this, and how do we sustain that? So I think all the things that we're doing, particularly around these soft feelings that isn't always there, people don't necessarily understand and want to invest in that, but we're investing, we're investing in our best selves. And in order to do that, it is a part of creating a culture of care, and that includes self-care, that includes mental health care, that includes all the care, all those needs that are there that we don't often do, because we sometimes get criticized for doing them. But we obviously know through this pandemic, that has showed, it has elevated so much that the mental and, and just the physical toll that it has taken on us, and we need to invest in ourselves, to sustain ourselves, to be our very best for the, for those who we serve. So I really appreciate you bringing this to us. I continue, I want to support us going forward in this, and the more we invest that, the better we're going to have better outcomes in return on our investment when we invest in this way.
Yes, I, you know, the only thing I would add is that balance, having that balance, if we take care of ourselves, we could take care of others. And as Ms. Sims-Fulton and others here have said, is, is that, you know, our mental health and our physical health are tied together, and having that, keeping that in mind for everyone, and to also reach out to, for support if needed. It doesn't mean anything negative, it just means we're here, you know, we're here for each other, and we are all together in this at Santa Barbara Unified. Cavea.
Well, I don't have to say this, Dr. Beckel already knows I'm his biggest fan, so I'm going to try to keep this brief. But I just want to say that, you know, development for our current leaders, it doesn't just end there, because every single student in the district is a future leader of something, somewhere eventually. And so having leaders that are equipped to, to, you know, be the best versions of themselves for students and be a good role model for students is not just going to, you know, benefit us in the moment and benefit us in the now, but it's going to carry us forward for generations to come. And I think that's why it's so important that we understand the context of things like this. So thank you so much. And I just wanted to, you know, share my, my gratitude. I talked a little bit about how it's important to be transparent and be vulnerable, and I think, you know, I've had the privilege of growing up in this kind of environment, education system where even though it's still stigmatized, it's normalized to speak about self-care and mental health care and, you know, just practices to take care of yourself, give back to yourself, put yourself first. But I know that that's not something that every single educator has experienced, and I know that's a barrier that is often between students and educators, is this kind of misunderstanding of what does self-care look like and who is worthy of self-care and who's entitled to self-care, right? We're not really on the same page about that. And I think it's so important that we have an opportunity for the adults to learn and continue learning so that the students and adults can work together and collaborate and really be on the same page, because I think that dissonance is, is sometimes creating chaos in the classroom. But I also wanted to note the, the different administrators that we mentioned, the contract that would likely be receiving this training, they're all from different, like, levels. So we have people in elementary schools, junior highs, and high schools all getting this training, so it's not just going to, you know, benefit one group of students, it's going to be. So it's not just going to, you know, benefit one group of students, it's gonna benefit everybody. And hopefully, it's going to encourage students to also continue bettering themselves when they see adults in the cla, in their classroom or adults on campus going and, going out of their way to improve and going out of their way to develop themselves as a leader. I think it'll also encourage us as kids to, to continue that internal learning and development ourselves. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cavia. Um, do I have a motion?
I would just like to make a recommendation.
I'm sorry.
So I know that I, I brought the report in the context of these, these two contracts. I would like to suggest that I, I'm gonna have further contracts to engage in, in coaching with our leaders. And so one idea I had was to bring those back on consent under contracts, but I'll actually title them Leadership Development Plan, and then have, so you'll be able to tell anytime we're asking for a contract for the Leadership Development Plan, it'll be labeled. Is that, would that be okay with the board to, to bring those back on consent?
Okay, yes, thank you.
Great.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, but before I do that, I want to, I, when I was preparing for the meeting, I thought about a quote, and I thought about all of you, leadership cabinet here. And I want to read this to you before I make the motion to approve this. "It's not easy to be where you are. You have come a long way, and we're very proud of you. So thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work that you do. And I'm happy to move that we approve this contract. Thank you."
I'm happy to second.
Okay, gay, um, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then now we will go to number five, Annual Report of Teacher Assignments and Approval of Resolution Number 2022-2023-13.
There we go. Good evening, Board President Munoz, Board of Education, and Dr. Maldonado. The item you have in front of you this evening is the Annual Report of Teacher Assignments and Approval of Resolution Number 2022-23-13. This item comes before the board on a yearly basis, and per the Teacher Commission on Teacher Credentialing, must be approved as an action item. After a thorough review of the secondary school's master schedules, it's been determined that various educators meet the criteria established by the Education Code and have both expertise and experience in their respective subject areas. We are asking for the approval of the annual report and the resolution, and I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, um, seeing that there are no questions, um, do I have a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Peak, and I move that we approve this resolution as presented.
And I second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, so Dr. Beckio is on again, Approval of Employment Agreement with Mr. Tony Ramirez.
All right, good evening again. Um, now, I love my two items tonight. So, um, I also want to present to you the contract, uh, that, um, outlines the terms of our agreement for employment with, um, Tony Ramirez, who you met tonight and who started on Monday. So I would just like you to consider this, and, um, and it does require approval on action agenda.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. No, I was just going to make the motion unless there's any comments. Okay, I move to approve, uh, the agreement with Mr. Tony Ramirez.
Nice second. Welcome, Mr. Ramirez.
Yes, um, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Ms. Peak, for, let's see, sorry.
Good evening again, Board President Munoz, Board of Education, and Dr. Maldonado. The item you have in front of you is the Approval of Provisional Internship Permits, otherwise known as PIPs. The PIP was created by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing when they phased out emergency credentials back in 2005. The Commission allows school districts to credential educators using a provisional internship permit, provided that the educators meet certain criteria. The criteria varies depending on whether it's a multiple-subject, single-subject, or education specialist credential. Each of the candidates listed on the document meets the required criteria for a PIP. Per the Commission, in order to provide an individual on a perm, on a PIP, there must be board approval as an action item on a regularly scheduled board meeting. We are asking for approval of the provisional internship permits before you this evening. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, um, seeing that there are no questions, do I have a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Peak, and I move that we approve two, four, two, four, six PIPs tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I second the motion.
Awesome, thank you. Um, all in favor, please raise your hands and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms.
Good evening, Board President Munoz, Dr. Maldonado, and School Board Members. It's my honor to recommend the board adopt this resolution, recognizing the second week of October as Disability History Week. I also want to thank Jacob Lesnar Buxton for his ongoing advocacy as the System Change Coordinator at Independent Living Resource Center. Jacob deserves credit for reaching out to us and encouraging us to recognize Disability History Week this year. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Ms. Munoz to start reading the resolution.
Okay, and I believe we have public comment on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers, one in person and one virtual.
Thank you.
Uh, the first one, if you want to do that first, before we read it, that's great. Um, the first one is, uh, Dina Davis. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Board President Munoz, esteemed board members, and Superintendent Maldonado. My name is Dina Davis. Uh, I'm the former CPAC Chair and current CPAC Rep for Santa Barbara High School, and the mother of a son with Cornelia Deleng Syndrome. I'm here to support the resolution declaring the second week of October Disability History Week. I hope that with the passage of this resolution and the faithful commitment to teaching disability history, that names like Ed Roberts and Judith Hume will become familiar to all staff and students in Santa Barbara Unified. I hope we, as a community, celebrate hard-won civil rights legislation like Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act, the Individuals with Disabilities, sorry, Education Act, IDEA, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. I hope all staff and students will join in the ongoing work to remove barriers, provide support, and center the voices of students, staff, and community members with disabilities. Lastly, I hope we will acknowledge and support our teachers and paraeducators who provide essential special education services. Thank you for being committed to equity and inclusion. And with my remaining time, I wanted to share some resources that teachers might be able to use. Being Human is an unrepentant memoir of a disability rights activist by Judith Hume, uh, for adults, possibly high school. Um, there's also a middle school version of that book called Rolling Warrior: The Incredible, Sometimes Awkward True Story of a Rebel Girl on Wheels Who Helped Spark a Revolution. We Want to Go to School is the Fight for Disability Rights. Um, it's a case Mills versus Board of Education in the District of Columbia, seven families. Uh, I believe all black families fought for their right, for their children to have an equal education, and it ended up benefiting eight million children in the U.S. Fighting for Yes was just, uh, published. It's the story of disability rights active activist Judith Hume in picture book form.
Thirty seconds left.
Thank you. And lastly, all the way to the top, How One Girls Fight for Americans with Disabilities Changed Everything by Annette Bay Pimentel. And I know our indie bookstore chasers would be happy to fulfill any orders. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And our, uh, last speaker is virtual. If he's available, it's Jacob Lesnar Buxton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just would say on behalf of I A R O C E, the Independent Living Research, so to thank you so much for passing this important resolution. You'll be joining, um, different cities in the states, including Harvard in Young Beach, in recognizing Disability History Week, which, which brought about by students in 2010, and tend to make progress their history needed to be taught. And we would be happy if the Independent Living Research tried to provide any training to staff, students, and teachers in disability history as well as in class and virtual presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lesnar Buxton, and thank you, Ms. Dina Davis. And that concludes public comment. President Munoz.
Thank you, Ms. Capps, and thank you also to Jacob, um, a good friend, and thank you so much for having us recognize Disability History Week. Thank you. Um, and we will go ahead and start. I'm sorry, Mr. Shetler? Oh, okay.
So I think I'm handing it over to you to read the resolution. You're on.
Okay, um, board members, so we'll, we will go ahead and start. Whereas in August 2010, the California Legislature led, designated the second week of October as Disability History Week in California, and?
Whereas all communities are bound by people, places, and events that shaped them and made them what they are. And the disability community is no different. Disability history is made up of people, places, things, and events that had an impact on people with disabilities, and?
Whereas Disability History Week is about educating youth with and without disabilities on the many contributions people with disabilities have made throughout American history, and?
Whereas exposure to disability history gives young people with disabilities a sense of where they've been and where they can go, a context for developing and feeling a sense of pride in themselves and their disabilities, and?
I think you're on mute.
Whereas the Santa Barbara Unified School District promotes a culture where students' differences in abilities, racial and ethnic backgrounds, native languages are seen as assets to be celebrated and, and nurtured, and?
The Santa Barbara Unified School District hereby supports Disability History Week, October 10th to 14th, 2022, and encourages all staff, students, and parents to spread messages of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and?
Whereas the Santa Barbara Unified School District encourages organizations and schools throughout Santa Barbara and Galita to engage in a wide variety of activities to celebrate and honor the disability rights movement, recognizing that positive change has come out of the work of the disability rights movement. And many times, those changes have impacted everyone in society.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Barbara Unified School District does hereby support Disability History Week, October 10th through 14th, 2022, and encourages its students, parents, and staff to spread messages of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And? Yes, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve, uh, Resolution Number 2022-23-14, recognizing October 10th to 14th Disability History Week.
And I second with appreciation to the community for bringing this forward.
Okay, um, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we will go to number nine on the action agenda, the Board Action on Petition for Readmission of an Expelled Student, Education Code, sorry, 48918, Case Number 202122-22, but dash, I'm sorry, 02.
President Munoz, I move to approve the petition for readmission of an expelled student in the education code that you cited, Case Number 202122-02.
I second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously.
I can keep going. Item 10, uh, President Munoz, I move to approve, uh, Board Action on the Petition for Readmission of the Expelled Student, Case Number 202122-19.
And I second. Okay, uh, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, uh, passes unanimously. And then, yeah.
Okay, item 11, I move to accept the Administrative Hearing Panel's recommendation for expulsion with suspended enforcement for two semesters in the case of 202122-35.
Nice second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, okay, uh, passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we will go to the reported discussion agenda, the Off and Away Campaign.
Board President, Board, Superintendent Cabinet, Community, I'm excited to come and give this update about the work on the Off and Away Campaign. I do want to preface it by there was no policy shift or change. This was just a shift in practice. Our policy was enough and suffice. It already mentioned in there that there, that phone should be put away during instructional time. So this was just about calibrating across the district. And it's exciting to share this because it was a collaboration between staff, union leadership, community, feedback from students, family. So this really was a partnership in the work, so I'm excited to share that. Next slide, please. Just want to remind you, this isn't something separate and new. We've already identified what our high-leverage work is, thus the focus of our work. We've already said that the magic happens in the center of this circle, which is the relationship between students, teachers, and content. And so this, the workaround off and away is really to support the center of that circle. We want students present and having access to that magic. This was a great opportunity to share this with families and get feedback from them, um, clarify any misconceptions they had about the program. Um, when we talk about our M C, M T S S strategies, which we'll hear all of us presenting on, because it's how we identify how we do the work, it, one of the high-leverage practices is in obtaining feedback from our community. So we've been very, uh, present about that. The Off and Away Campaign falls under that fourth bullet, that increasing- The Off and Away Campaign falls under that fourth bullet, that increasing equitable responses to students' academic behavior and wellness needs. Not only is it a distraction from instruction, but we also know there's some wellness concerns that come with phone addiction, and that we want to make sure that we're treating it as such and that we're being responsive based on age appropriateness. Next slide, please. So the Tech Use Committee has landed on, there's three focus areas for their work in this committee, and that is to review the policies, practices, and data around access to academic standards and content. We do acknowledge there's some positive for engaging with technology and instruction because it does allow families and students, I said in our webinar, to leave their zip code, their city, their state, their country. So we do want to value that there's some added value in access with technology. But we also want to teach for our young people, though, those social emotional learning competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship-building skills, as well as being responsible decision-makers. So we want to teach young people to manage themselves so that teachers don't have to manage them in the classroom. We also are looking at this from a wellness lens. So the Tech Use Committee has kept all three of these at the focus point of their work. Our first project out of the Tech Use Committee was the Off and Away Campaign, but they fall under all of these bullets. Next slide. I do want to acknowledge the amazing work. They did come up with a mission statement or a vision statement for the committee and for technology use. They were given the one on the left, and they landed after that first meeting. It was their first deliverable, the agreement for how we consider technology use, and I'll read that. Technology used in a balanced and responsible way will enhance learning and build connections for all members of Santa Barbara Unified School District community. So I just want to acknowledge, it didn't take them long to really land on they wanted balanced and responsible. So that will guide our work around technology use and partnership across our different divisions and departments. Next slide. Really want to highlight, we've already identified our theory of change, this isn't anything new and different. We are really lifting up the practices of MTSS. Multi-tier system of support is how we do business, right? It's how do we elevate the practices of MTSS? You heard my colleague talk earlier about using that to build development for administrative leadership. How do we build leaders to lead leaders? And so that's the work we're doing. Next slide. As part of the Technology Use Committee, we really wanted to focus on the wellness piece of that. And how do we use data to impact decisions? How do we make sure that we're providing information, not only soliciting it? And so we really did want to ground all of the work around the technology use in the wellness. As you can see, they're at all grade levels. There's concerns about the amount of consumption, technology consumption, that young people are using. So how do we want to teach them that expectation? We were honored to partner with Project Reboot within the city, who came to our first Tech Use Committee meeting and grounded us in the impacts that technology had on him personally. I can't wait for you all to also hear from him. The committee was excited to hear his data and to branch out and have him come present at all of our high schools, and the negative impact it had on distracting him as he was at college. And so those are lessons learned from us. That was a great partnership in guiding these conversations. Although I'm facilitating the space, the experts are in the room, and so I'm excited to learn from all of them. Next slide. I want to share with you, these are the posters that are around campus, that you can see at the entrance of buildings. We were very intentional, as we were just starting this in the implementation phases, of teaching what the expectation is. And we added a QR code on this poster because we wanted to hear from students and staff around a couple of points, and you'll see some of that data tonight. It's still open. We were very clear on this poster to identify that although cell phones, smartwatches, and ear pods or buds, earphones are off, if students have a medical condition that requires them to use their phone, that they notify the school so that we will allow that. So it wasn't an all or nothing. We're still being equitable in our response because some students use it for either diabetic checks, to check their heart rate. So we want to be responsive to that. Next slide. So here's some of the data that we've collected. We've collected more, but this is kind of the high leverage stuff to look at. As you can see, 79% of the folks who have responded to the survey are students. So we have 188 responses as of when this was posted. I checked before I came up here, we're at 190 now. But you see the bulk of the responses are from our students, which is great. You also can see that this was a self-reporting, so I asked, how often do you use your cellphone during class, up the top right? And you can see about 103, 54%, almost 55% say, nah, not really, not much, like, I'm not really using it that often. We also asked, what are you using it for? I think this is important for us to take into account. This data will go back to the Tech Use Committee. What you can see is, we had almost 29% of the folks responded said they use it for instruction, right? So as we're saying off in the way in the classroom, there are some students who are reported saying, well, I use it for, if I'm doing a report, I download pictures. If I need to connect with the internet because it's faster, I can do it on my phone. Like, there is some positive uses that were reported. So we just want to keep that, making sure that students have access to technology in the classroom that isn't their cellphone, so they can still achieve those same purposes. We have about 35% say, I don't use it for any of those things, right? They had an option. 11% said I use it for personal time, texting, social media. Again, this was a self-report. The thing we really want to focus on as we highlight MTSS practices is we want to make sure that when we roll this out, it's fair and consistent. So this last question was important to know for the committee if we needed to tweak our messaging. Does the Off and Away clearly communicate cellphone expectations during class? And as you can see, 91% of those who responded said, yes, it does. So that is a large percentage of folks who have saw the poster, replied, and said, oh yeah, this is clearly telling me what the expectation is. I do want to remind us, we're in the business of children. So just because they clearly understand the expectation, it does not relieve us of the obligation and work to maybe remind them of the expectations, reteach and teach the expectation, and then respond appropriately when they're not meeting those expectations. Next slide. Again, this is an implementation, we're phasing this in. We started with just telling the expectation at the beginning of the year. We want to be fair and consistent in how we roll out expectations. It would be unfair to tell them today and hold them accountable today, but we did kind of phase it in. The Tech Use Committee met, we kind of talked about what it'd be called, what would be included in that Off and Away, what is a learning zone, and how do schools define them? We added in that QR code on there so that we can get information back. We're now meeting, talking, and we were very important about including our families, so that's why we just had three webinars. We had about 68 attendees, the first webinar, 21 or two the second, and then we had two our last webinar. So we did offer them at different times online so that families had access to any one of them. Our next phase, the Technology Use Committee is meeting this month, 4th Wednesday, and we're talking about what would be the appropriate response when students don't meet the expectation. We want to make sure we're being consistent across grade level and that it's age-appropriate and ability-appropriate when we respond. We always want to teach the expectation. So the panel put forth, I mean, the Technology Use Committee put forth recommendations, and then they all voted on what they thought would be, after the first time a student doesn't meet the expectation, what happens after the second time? So we have that data, we'll review it in the Technology Use Committee, and then we will vet it out and have other folks comment on it. Once we have landed on those, we enter into our Phase Two. We want to vet that out with families and students. We want to make sure that we clearly communicate to all the school sites that we don't have different expectations at different high schools or middle schools or elementary schools. When our families transition from one school to another, the expectation is known and clear. After we're done with that phase, that's our second phase between October and December, we roll into our third phase, which is full implementation. That's between January and June. That gives students an opportunity to learn what the expectations are, staff an opportunity to teach and reteach, and promote, families an opportunity to provide feedback, and then us to land on what our plan is. I do want to say during the family webinars, I had two families contact after and say, I want to be on the committee, so I'm excited that I sent them the invite, and we'll have families that'll be present in the Technology Use Committee. We now have our CTO on board, so one of the high leverage practices of MTSS is linking multiple initiatives so that we don't have several meetings about the same thing. We link the work so that we can align our efforts, and so I'm excited to learn from his expertise and for him to contribute and us to kind of co-facilitate that space. Next slide. Thank you so much. Any questions? I do want to read off a couple of family comments because I did take notes during the webinar. Tons of thankfulness and gratitude for doing the work and helping families limit the amount of time students spend on devices, support for the campaign and teaching students the skills to manage themselves in a balanced way. Had a couple of comments about collecting phones during class is actually counterproductive to teaching self-management because of allowing kids to manage themselves, we have teachers managing them. A couple of concerns just about small keyboards and how that may impact wrist development or injuries for students, and a conversation about making a recommendation for them to be able to use their personal computers and not small keyboards, and then access for families to how do you lock down the devices? So those are things that'll come out of our collaboration with ETS, who's already on it and have plans and work in that space, but these are some of the feedbacks that I have from parents. Now, any questions?
Well, first, we have some public comment. Yeah, thank you so much. So we have three, I'm sorry, four members of the public who've requested to speak, one in person, and that's Kimberly Osborne. Osborne? You can correct my pronunciation.
That was right. Hello, my name is Kimberly Osborne. I've been a school psychologist here for 10 years, and I'm also a mother of three. I wanted to give a big thank you to district leaders and to Ms. Kenya Edison in particular for implementing the Off and Away Campaign. I have seen firsthand a big improvement in our secondary classrooms this year as a result of the campaign. There is still much work to do in this area, but after seeing the work of the Technology Use Committee, after speaking with Mr. Stephen Vens, and after seeing Ms. Edison's strong leadership in this area, I am very confident in the process and I'm excited to see continued results. There may be students who are unhappy with this change, there are, and parents who are unhappy because their students are unhappy, but we can all agree that our job as an academic institution is to support students in doing not just what they want to do and what feels good, but what is good for them, what will support their well-being, and what will help them function in their future careers. To highlight the importance of this campaign, I wanted to talk a little bit about adolescent brain development. Children's brains develop in spurts called critical periods, and there are two. We're all familiar with the first critical period in early childhood, but we often forget there is a second critical period during adolescence. This increased brain plasticity in teens results in opportunities for development, but also increased vulnerabilities. If our teens are spending nine to 12 hours per day on devices, which they are, we saw in the last slide, if they are checking their phones hundreds of times a day, they are, if they are constantly thinking about their phone and going through the addiction-like dopamine cycle of, do I have a message? I should check, their brains will likely be forever impacted. Research also shows us that smartphones impact our ability to focus deeply. If our phone is in our pocket or backpack, even on silent, we are distracted by the thought of it. When our teens are distracted in this way, they are, by definition, unable to engage in deep thinking, the type of thinking required for an academically rigorous task. Deep thinking and focusing intently without distraction are difficult, effortful activities. Our brains must be encouraged to engage in them. If our adolescents are always tethered to their phones, even if it's on their table, even if it's sort of off or silent, they are unable to practice this type of thinking. And if they never practice this type of deep-focused thinking, their brains may never be capable of doing it.
Thirty more seconds.
If we are committed to academic excellence, to student health and well-being, then this is a non-negotiable part of education. We must do the difficult work of teaching students to separate from their phones, and it is difficult work, and unfortunately, it has become our responsibility to do this difficult work, because if we do not insist upon smartphone-free spaces, we are missing a key ingredient required for healthy brain development and learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we would turn to our virtual public comment participants. The first is Melissa Quigley, and the second is Dr. Kristen Hughes, followed by Greg, Dr. Greg Gaetan, if those three are available. Yes.
Hi, this is Melissa Quigley. Hello, School Board Members and Cabinet and Dr. Maltonato. My name is Melissa Quigley, and I just wanted to take a moment tonight to thank all of you for your hard work and your dedication on prioritizing our children's learning and their well-being. Through this new cellphone policy and also the Tech Use Committee, many of you may have already heard some of this research before, but if anyone's having doubts on the necessity for a cellphone policy, just listen to a few more stats from research. College students who are not using their cellphones wrote down 62% more information in their notes and scored a letter grade and a half higher on a multiple-choice test than students who are actively using phones. After schools in England banned mobile phones, test scores of 16-year-olds increased by 6.4%, with effects twice as impactful on the scores of low-achieving students. There's been a few college class studies done where students are randomly assigned text message interruptions. In one study, the students assigned the highest amount of text interruptions scored 10.6 lower than the other text interruption groups. Another study found significantly lower scores on a test among students who were texted during lecture compared to students who were not texted. And also, have you heard of the term "brain drain"? A 2017 study found that even when students turned off their phone, those who had it off but with them, rather than the phone in another room, actually did worse on tasks. So the attention and energy it takes to not check a phone may be causing brain drain. Another 2014 study also found that the mere presence of phones can negatively impact attention and performance. So again, I just want to say thank you for making healthy changes for our youth. We have the opportunity to model to our students now what healthy tech looks like and to help them understand how to make these choices for themselves, and we can make a difference, and we are making a difference. And we also know that mental health and student safety is a big concern. So a few more stats. Young adults using social media more than five hours a day compared to those who use it less than two hours have a higher risk of depression. Teens that spend three or more hours a day on electronic devices have a 35% higher risk of suicide than those who spend less than an hour a day. Teens who spend five or more hours a day on electronic devices have a 71% suicide-higher risk factor, and teens who spend five or more hours a day versus less than one have less sleep. So depression, loneliness, hopelessness, suicide rates, cyberbullying, these are all increasing, they're all real concerns. And again, I mentioned a few months ago, we're Santa Barbara Unified, we can do this, and tonight I just want to say thank you. Yes, we are Santa Barbara Unified, and we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on the deadline there. Thank you so much. Next would be Dr. Kristen Hughes, please, if you are with us.
Board Member Capps, Dr. Hughes and Dr. Gaetan are not online.
Okay. That concludes public comment. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edison. Board Members, do you have any questions or comments? Ms. Sims-Moulton or Ms. Ford? Oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Me, Ms. Ford or Ms. Sims-Moulton?
Ms. Ford, go ahead, Ms. Ford.
Oh, thank you so much. Well, I just wanted to say that just today I received three texts from parents in the district, unsolicited, just praising the progress on Off and Away, and I want to send deep kudos to Ms. Edison for making this happen. The board was very interested and adamant in trying to make sure that we are focused on making technology access and the use of technology by young people healthy and positive above all. And again, I would just like to thank Tech Wise Santa Barbara, who came through and just shared with us the reasons and the data and the sense that it made. I'm very excited for the future work on the Technology Use Committee, so thank you to all.
And thank you. I echo those comments as well. I really also want to extend just the appreciation for the mission statement that they came together with you read earlier. I really appreciate that. And also just the continued clarity and continuous improvement to achieve balance in what we're doing to achieve the outcome so we have healthier students and they have a healthier learning environment. It is a tool. You know, sometimes as young teenage, you need something to say against your friends. Well, no, we have that campaign. We're giving them a tool to say, no, I'm not going to do this. And so I can really appreciate that. And then I also want to say how this Off and Away has really permeated into the community. I actually heard from some community members, like, we might be having some folks come in and listen to our presentation, Ms. Edison, so be prepared if you get a call from the community about how are you doing that, because I think some alt spaces and, you know, other organizations are- Because I think some alt spaces and, you know, other organizations are wanting to achieve the Off and Away so they can have better concentration, achieve better outcomes in their meetings, and appreciate more attention. So that was unsolicited as well in terms of, like, "You guys are doing this at Santa Barbara Unified, how are you doing that?" So I want to point them to the folks who are most closely related to the issue. So don't be surprised that you might have some comments that come and ask, "How are we doing that?" So that says also that this is, you know, not only just about our students, but it's a community. Can you imagine if this becomes a community effort, Off and Away, how much better we will be, stronger, more focused as a community? So thank you for your continued efforts with this, and thank you for just the partnership. And this is, you know, this was a challenging conversation, and I just appreciate the leadership that all, that everybody's working to make sure that we get to the outcomes that we seek.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you for all your work, and thank you to all the teachers for the work that they're doing on this. And thank you to the students who are collaborating, cooperating with this. Three of the back-to-school nights that I went, I know for sure there are two, and I think there was a third one. When the principal mentioned this, the parents actually applauded. So it's been very well-received, and it was time, it was all timing, so it was time, and thank you for your work.
Ms. Caps?
Yeah, I want to applaud the substance of this. I've done it in previous meetings for months now, but just thank you for the way in which we've expanded this beyond just kind of a disciplinary conversation, but really more of a holistic conversation about the impact of technology and phones on brains and what this means for learning. And those statistics that Ms. Quigley recited are incredible. I'd love to see them in writing, if you wouldn't mind emailing them to us, as you are so good about communicating. And I did, just anecdotally, I've heard from parents as well. One dad told me of a high school student, he said, "The fact that I would text my daughter in high school about dinner plans and get a response within 10 seconds, I knew I was wrong and the whole system was wrong." So I think there's a lot of relief out there, because we were, you know, we do what's easy unless there's guardrails, and that's what we're providing. So thank you for that. I love Ms. Sims-Moten's comment about grownups need to, the adults need to practice this Off and Away, so maybe this will spread. And just to commend on the process too, this is really an example of Joyce coming forward on behalf of teachers, the community coming forward, and for this district to be responsive. And Ms. Edison, I just have to say, your leadership, the way that you present just the Christmas, the, your energy just instills such confidence. And I love the fact that there was three different webinars at different times, really trying to make such a good faith effort to reach people. And I think we did, in fact, I was a negligent mom cooking dinner on the last one. I was like, "Oh, shoot, it's happening." And I got on, it was already over because you had already saturated the fact, there was already three. So this one, there was only a couple of people on, so it was over earlier than planned, but that's my fault. So I watched it online. So thank you so much for the diligence in the effort, not just you. I know it's a team effort and teachers and principals and Dr. Maldonado, but I think this is, I think we're on to something good, and we just got to keep it up and know that we're on a path, and it gives me a lot of gratitude. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I facilitate this space, but it really is the work of the tech use. So thank you so much for acknowledging their hard work, because it really is about aligning our efforts to move results, moving from talk to action, and they did a great job at that.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Muñoz.
Thank you.
Capia?
I know it's already dark, and I'm not trying to keep us here until we're all sleepy, so I'm going to try to keep this short. But thank you so much, Ms. Edison, for, I think the biggest thing that I noticed is, like you said, you know, we're not trying to make students feel bad for a problem that I feel like was kind of imposed upon us. If I could go back and tell myself before junior high, like, "This phone thing is not worth the hype, it's going to be, you know, the cause of a lot of your issues." I wish I could, because, you know, at that age, it's an exciting thing to get this phone and have access to your friends, your family, information, and literally like a millisecond. It's crazy, and it's power, and as in every situation, power can be, you know, advantaged or abused. And so I think it's really important that we help students recognize that there are relationships in the real world. There are people, you can hold their hand now, you know, you can give them hugs, you can give them high fives, fist bumps. You can talk to them face-to-face, you can be authentic, and you can be honest, and it doesn't have to happen behind that blue screen that's like glowing at you. And I'm not going to sit here and say it's perfect, right? Like, there are obviously days where I stay up way too late on my phone, not even knowing what to do. Like, I'm just scrolling, and I don't know why I'm scrolling or what I'm scrolling about, and I don't know what's going on. And I'm just like there, and it's just annoying me because I want to go to sleep, but I can't sleep. And it's, you know, but it's about having that space where you're allowed to interact in the real world, and you're allowed to be grounded in reality and not this reality, but like actual reality. And I think that's so important, especially because, you know, I've grown up in the age of technology. And my parents started with flip phones, and now, you know, there's like phones in your ear, and I'm like, "What's going on?" But I think it's just so important that we acknowledge, you know, you haven't had the choice of technology, but you have the choice of how you use it. So thank you so much for all the work that you've done, and thank you to the community for coming forward. And I know that a lot of students might not want to say it, because it's like really lame to acknowledge that you hate your phone. But I'll be, I'll take the lame title for the team and just say, "Not having your phone in the classroom feels pretty darn good."
Yes, thank you, Kavia, my goodness, so true. And for a reminder to us adult, you know, to adults, and just to, you know, enjoy those around us and observe. So many times, you're like, "Oh, my goodness, let me check, let me make my shopping list or whatever." And really, like, you know, is that important right now, you know, rather than just taking it all in and being there, being present in the moment? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edison. Okay, we will now move to... Sorry? Oh, okay. We will now go to coming events. If there are any coming events anyone would like to bring up?
I have two, and I've asked my team to show, there's a couple of school board candidate workshops that I wanted for us to highlight and maybe for folks to know about. One is the September 21st here at Santa Barbara County Education Office. And the second one is the Ventura County Education Office is also hosting an event on October 1st. Thank you, that was a lot of reading there. See, reading today is my challenge. I knew this implicitly, October 1st. So information for upcoming candidate, board candidate workshops that I wanted to share with you tonight. I, sorry, I also wanted to, sorry, I have two more. Remind the board or ask the board about California School Boards Association Conference is scheduled for December 1st through the 3rd. So I would want to know if board members are interested in attending that. And lastly, I've emailed board members potential future dates for the board session. For budget, I sent you three dates, two Tuesdays, October 18th, November 1st, or a Saturday, October 29th, for future... Sorry, I went to future agenda items instead of coming events, all in one fell swoop, but...
That's okay, it's all good.
I am all on calendar today. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, and also, you know, I definitely suggest for anyone, you know, of course, here present or watching about the candidate, school board candidate sessions, they are very helpful. I found that very helpful four years ago. And any other agenda items? Ms. Alvarez?
Are we on future agenda items now? Am I on the right one? Okay, so you sent an email for the dates for the study session already? Okay, so we don't need to decide that right now, or did you want a date right now? Is that what you're asking?
I was hoping we could all look at calendars and decide on one of those three dates. And if those three dates don't work, if we can kind of hear from everyone tonight, so I can offer new dates.
Okay.
And I can read them out to you again.
Okay, that'd be good.
We chose two Tuesdays. If the board wishes to do Tuesdays, we can do something like 5 to 8, and that would be October 18th and November 1st. If we want to do Saturday, which we could do, which we've done in the past, like a 9 to 12, we are, we're offering October 29th.
This was an item that was requested by the teachers, so I'd like to get Joyce's input. I, what she thinks would be best. To me, a Saturday works fine with me. I don't know for this, for your staff, Dr. Maldonado, or I don't know if we would get more teachers to participate if we do it on a Saturday. I cannot do October 18th for sure, so that's out for me.
So I ran this by Kim, and she and I agreed that those, the Tuesday, for us, Tuesday or Saturday works just the same. I would imagine for teachers, you know, it would probably be the same. Some may, I think you'll get a split, honestly. Some teachers don't want to use up their Saturdays for something like this, and we prefer just to keep it and have a longer day. And the other half will say the opposite, so I think it's really up to the board members' agendas.
So is it between, is it November 1st since the October 18th doesn't work?
Yeah, so October 18th is out, the 29th, November, Tuesday, November 1st or Saturday, October 29th. And I don't know if Ms. Sims-Moten, Ms. Ford already responded that all those dates work for her. Ms. Sims-Moten, do you have any?
My phone was Off and Away, so, but I'm sure they probably work.
Very well played, Ms. Sims-Moten.
No, I'm sure they work fine.
I prefer November 1st. I believe I'm available Saturday, the 29th.
I prefer the 1st also.
I'm available the 29th, but if the 1st is the only day, then I can try to move things around.
Okay, and I'm available on the 29th and November 1st.
You guys landed just like the teachers on both, it sounds like. So I, if board members are okay, the... I think November 1st works for us, a Tuesday, since we're used to doing the Tuesday board meetings. And board members, because it is a board meeting, it's on a Tuesday, Ms. Alvarez, would a 5 o'clock be better for you or later? I know you said you might have to move things around if we do that date.
You know what, 5:00 will be fine, just not earlier than 5:00.
Okay, that's what I was, yeah. So 5:00, and we can, and I'm thinking that we could probably do this in two and a half hours, maybe three hours. It's a study session, so usually we take a little longer.
We should allocate three hours since it was such a big interest to teachers. I want to make sure they all know that they can come and ask questions or maybe send their questions in advance. So, and also, I want to make sure that the board questions are included in the study session. So I will send you my questions so that you can prepare with your staff.
Great, so we'll schedule it for Tuesday and November 1st, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And I'd like to ask all board members to please encourage you highly to send us anything you want to see as part of that. We will also be engaging with some of our partners. As you know, board members, we have Ms. Hernandez, Ms. President, I have been working on a Moody's credit rating for the school district as part of the bond sale, and we'll probably include some of the consultants we work with to also be part of that board study session so that you can be equipped with as much information as we also get for some of our fiscal package. Okay, thank you.
President Muñoz and members of the board, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have Dr. Hughes online and would like to speak, if that's okay with you.
Okay, yes, yes, go ahead. Thank you, Sandra.
Yeah, Dr. Hughes, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that technical difficulties earlier, but good evening, Superintendent Maldonado and Santa Barbara Unified School Board. My name's Dr. Kristen Hughes, and I'm a pediatric, a community pediatrician. And I would like to thank you for your attention to the issues of excessive screen time use amongst children and adolescents and your recent actions to help improve the health and well-being of our students by protecting learning zones. Over the past two decades, more and more of our lives have moved onto social media platforms and other digital public spaces. This is a prime example, and the pandemic rapidly accelerated this trend. According to the U.S. Surgeon General's advisory last year during the pandemic, the time teenagers spent in front of screens for activities not related to school more than doubled from 3.8 to 7.7 hours per day. And in 2020, 81% of 14 to 22-year-olds said they use social media daily or almost constantly. In these digital public spaces, which are privately owned and tend to be for profit, tech companies focus on maximizing time spent, not necessarily time well-spent. Many researchers argue that digital technologies expose children to bullying, contribute to obesity eating disorders, insufficient sleep, and encourage children to negatively compare themselves to others, contributing to mental health conditions, and in some cases, self-harm. Several studies have linked time on social media to depression and anxiety. Pre-pandemic, 1 in 3 high school students reported feeling of sadness or hopelessness, which was a 40% increase from 10 years just before. And ER visits for children with depression, anxiety, and behavioral challenges rose 28% during roughly that same time. Doctors are concerned about this trend, which was only exacerbated by the pandemic, where in early 2021, ER visits for suspected suicide attempts in children were 51% higher, especially adolescent girls during that same time just the year before. We know that mental health conditions are shaped by both biological and environmental factors. And while many recommendations are generally geared towards individuals, the reality is that systemic change is necessary too. This includes institutions that surround young people and shape their day-to-day lives, including schools, community organizations, healthcare systems, technology companies, media, and government. The best treatment here is prevention, and I am encouraged by the efforts like Off and Away, as these interventions help kids restore balance and can prevent mental health conditions before they ever need to see a doctor. So thank you all so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kristen Hughes. That concludes public comment. Ms. Alvarez?
Ms. Muñoz, now, are we back now to future agenda items?
Are we back?
Yes, yes. Okay, so before you close it, I, there's something I'd like to do, but you go finish. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. On our future agenda items, we've had EML program review there for, I think, almost a year now. So I'd like for us to start thinking of dates, so that I know that Dr. Maldonado needs to schedule your workload and your staff. So I'd like to start thinking of a date where we can bring that to the board?
Yes, what I would like to ask is a little bit more clarity around the title. So we did call it EML Program Review, and I'm seeking to understand better. Are you looking for us to give you data on this, you know, how students are doing in EML? Or would you like us to define what a program is comprised of in terms of, like, the immersion, English immersion versus dual immersion? So if you could just kind of give me a little bit more guidance there, then I can probably assess when is best for us to bring that forward.
What I'm looking for is to get a full understanding of how, what's, number one, what is our EML population in the district? How is it defined that a student is an EML learner? So that would be good, you know, back to basics. What is it? How are we serving the students? How are we measuring their progress? And what services are in place to provide services to this population of students? I like to understand better the LPAC, the LPAC, I think it's called. And also, students that do pass the LPAC, are they, how many are at grade level? And if they're not, what are we doing to support those students? And also, when Tiffany Carson was still here, she brought forward, remember the grant? And I requested that we include preparation for the LPAC. So I like to see, I like to see how is that being embedded in the services that we are providing to our EML population? Now, at the same token, and I don't know if this is at the same... Now, at the same token, and I don't know if this is at the same meeting, it could be at a different, different meeting, how is McKinley doing? How is the dual immersion doing? How is the meta doing? Uh, when I joined the board, that was a total new, it was the first year. So I'm not as familiar as most board members are with, with all the research, all the work that was done before. So I'm not, I'm not looking that we bring that forward again. I'm looking in, how's it going? So it's up to you. Is that at the same meeting or maybe that's a separate meeting? But my goal is that we fully communicate to the community and also to ourselves, what are the areas of growth? What are we doing? What can we do better? Does that help?
A lot. And so what I'm going to propose is that I meet with the team. And the way that you have outlined it makes a lot of sense to me, and I almost see it like the three-part presentation that will, some will take a little longer than the rest. So the initial part is super straightforward, easy. We can do that one right away. And that would be, you know, just who are EMLs, how we define them, what services do we have, how we monitor their progresses, and what services we have in place. That we can do. The second part, which is more around, uh, both longitudinal data analysis and current data analysis, is going to take us a little bit longer. As you know, we don't currently have a data analyst on staff. And I know that, uh, actually, Mr. Vence and I just talked about this today. We may have to contract some of that workout because we don't have that available. So that'll take a little bit longer. Um, and then the LPAC is another session, and that will be just more about giving you all an understanding of the LPAC, which is very different from any other English language proficiency assessment I've seen in my 30 years in education. And so we may even give you guys like a little, like a little taste of what that looks like. But, and that will also include a little bit of what reclassification is. The data analysis part is the longest, so that I could, I would say I'll need several months to get that going for what, the level you're asking for.
That's fine. And also, uh, along with that, the preparation, I mean, that LPAC test, it's not easy.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's not easy. And I mean, even fluent, uh, speakers, if you give them that test tomorrow without any preparation, it's hard. I wonder how many would even pass. So I, I like to know how, and I know that's new this year, that preparation. So I'd like to know, what are we doing to prepare the students to help them?
Yeah, that's a good one. So I'll, I'll include that. We can do that part of the first presentation. That's easy. We can definitely tell you a little bit more about that.
And I don't want to rush you. I, I, I'm looking more for quality more than rushing. So if you say, I need a couple of months to do this, that, that's fine. I just don't want it to fall off the radar.
Yeah, so what I'll, what I'll do, if it's okay with you, we'll break it up into a three-parter, and I'll schedule it out with the understanding that the data analysis will be the thing that's probably the last one to share with you. Okay, thanks. That was really clear. Thank you.
Yeah, that was helpful. I know when we did the agenda planning, um, this last time, we talked about like setting dates, you know, like approximate dates, right, for, for our future agenda items?
There was another one that we listed, if I may, um, the Comprehensive Literacy Report, which will, we're targeting also to come this fall. We are starting the Literacy Task Force Meetings, which I sent out in my board note. I sent out to parents and I also sent out to staff that those will be starting. I want to just explain that, um, similar to this process we just talked about with the Off and Away webinar, really getting some feedback first, and in addition, coupled with information of what's currently happening will be what that Comprehensive Literacy Report will be about. So again, it'll be almost like in stages or phases, rather than just like this, you know, everything's happening at once. Um, so I wanted to explain that one. The Student Outcomes Report has also been there a bit. If I recall correctly with Mr. Vence and I, last year, we were looking at that more as a progress report to the board that we decided we were going to do three times a year. I believe we said October, March, help me here. So the fall, mid-year, and spring were the three times. So even though these are titled that way, I don't know if the board wants me to just expand and, and kind of add some of those kinds of, um, pha- phases or stages that we want to do this work with.
I think that would be really helpful for everyone to understand. Uh, also, do you feel that you have enough guidance on the Comprehensive Literacy Report to get you to start planning? I, I'm not sure if we were clear on what we were looking for.
I'm happy to always take guidance. Um, in addition to that, because we are bringing in a task force and teachers, I imagine that I'm going to be getting some from them as well. Um, so yes, if you guys think of anything you want me to bring forward, I'll be happy to do that. And you can tell me now and I'll take notes.
I have some ideas. I don't know if, um, I know a board member, Caps, and I talked a little bit about that. Uh, what I, what I would like to see again is sort of the same composition as the EML, where we do sort of a self-analysis, right? Where we say, okay, what are we doing? Acknowledge what we're doing and what we're doing right, what's working? And then look at ourselves as being a learning organization and say, what are the areas of growth? What are the areas that we can improve? What materials are we using? And are those the right materials to serve our changing population? Because what worked for me, uh, many centuries ago, doesn't work for kids, for, for this young lady now, right? So to, to do that self-analysis of what we're doing, uh, our population, are we, ask ourselves the hard questions. Are we serving our population the way we, we, we can, we can serve them, because I know we can, right? And also bring that partnership. The bottom line is the teachers are the ones that are in front of the class. What's their opinion? What's their expert opinion? What training do they need? And how are we going to provide that?
Yeah, that's, that's clear. Any other board members on this topic?
Oh, Ms. Sims-Moan?
Necessarily on future agenda items. Are we done with that? I just want to circle back to something, uh, I don't want to interrupt where we are on this part.
Yes, go ahead.
So if we're done with that, so what I, what I, what is notice, I actually forgot, but I think, so the standing item that was with regards to the racial incidents on the, uh, on the campuses, is that, that was supposed to be a standing item? Are we no longer going to be reporting that regularly at each meeting? That's number one. And then secondly, the, I know the Anti-Blackness Work Group did get a chance to, or talk about or discuss the, the company that's coming in. And I'm wondering, and I was wondering if they're going to come before the board and make a presentation. I know we had the, um, you know, you gave us the RFP, who, all the, all the process that went into it, but I thought they were coming to make a presentation to the board as well. Did I misunderstand that?
So on the first one, the Racial Incidents Report, I am having a principals meeting this Thursday. I'll discuss with our principals. We did not pick that up again, uh, because we do know that the racial climate assessment is coming. Uh, so I'll get back to the board on that request. As far as the Insight, um, Contract, it's scheduled to come to the board on September 27th, at which time we'll have Insight Group make a presentation. We did have an opportunity with, uh, community folks, uh, to hear from Insight Group and give some recommendations and feedback on some things we want to continue to see, um, with regards to how they engage. Some of it being, for example, ensuring that we create safe spaces for people to get feedback in the focus groups, the kinds of tools they'll be using, things like that happen. Uh, well, you were part of that, Ms. Sims-Moan, so that already happened. We're having the Combating Anti-Blackness Work Group meeting, the 21st. At that meeting, we're going to also be looking at some of the recommendations they have made for the next steps in, um, which I believe I've sent to the board as well, which connects very closely to, sorry, I'm making all sorts of connections for you to answer. This is a long answer, uh, which also connects to some of the work that Dr. Beckill will be leading around the board's resolution for an annual anti-bias, anti-racism module for all employees. So all of that work is happening, um, and we can certainly plan to maybe, not maybe, we'll, we'll, we will bring an update on the 27th, similar to the report that Ms. Edison brought tonight with Off and Away, just to kind of give an update on all those parts. And I will work with principals on Thursday to talk about the reporting of racial incidents as well, to answer your question.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for that. And yes, I was part of that group. I just was more like, when was it coming to the board? So you've explained that part. Uh, but yeah, and I would just have a comment with regards to the racial incidents. I did, I wouldn't want the fact that it, it's, it can now go away as a result of that, that we're going to have a racial, uh, climate assessment. I think that really negates, like, we need to keep our attention on, on, on the forefront. So it's, it allows us like, okay, it's, it's, the attention on it is kind of going away because we're going to have this assessment. But I think it's really important to keep it on the forefront of what's happening so that, you know, it's an active part of what's happening in a racial climate, not just for a pause for a moment, because there's some other, you know, um, avenue by which we are measuring things. I think it's really important to have it be a standing item, um, on our agenda so that it's still at the forefront and it doesn't get pushed down like it tends to do.
Okay, so I'm hearing a request to have it be a standing item under Reports under H?
Where it's always been. I mean, when we talked about it, when all this first came out, we had a standing item, and then now it's kind of gone. So I'm just trying to figure out why it's gone, and that it's certainly open for board discussion, and I'm certainly happy to lead that discussion, but I thought it was clear, uh, in terms of it was going to be a standing item. And maybe that got misunderstood when the racial climate assessment came into play. But I want those to, I'm requesting as a board member to have that still be, uh, a standing item to give a report what's going on.
I support that.
Me too.
So with that said, what I will do is, because we were doing it very loosely in terms of gathering data, I'll make sure to work with the principals on Thursday, uh, with Ms. Edison and others to actually set up an actual system for gathering that information to bring back to the board on a regular basis. I just want to recognize that the initial phase of doing this work was very quick and was not set up as an actual reporting system. So we'll work on that and we'll certainly bring you a report on the 27th. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, the other two items, um, were the reviewing of the mission statement, and I'm also seeking clarity on that item. I don't recall how that came. And if, do we, do we still want an honor or do we want to take that out?
I think, um, may I speak? I, I think it's important, um, that, we, we've talked about this, and especially when we're doing the Governance Handbook Revision, that we all felt like perhaps it was time to look at the mission statement again. I would recommend that you have, uh, you know, you have a board election in November, and you should s- schedule, um, a board retreat. This would be a perfect example of a way to, um, at least introduce at least one new board member to, um, the work of the district and also address the mission at that time.
Okay, um, sounds good.
Thank you.
So we can change this to be more of, um, rather than have a read, review, mission statement, we can call a future board retreat in January. Will that work for the board?
Yes, I, I mean, I think so. Does everybody agree?
And Ms. Ford, I think this is related to the governance calendar, which is the next item on here. I think they were sort of connected when we did, you, you just brought me back to that governance handbook meeting, with the governance calendar and the mission statement both going to that board retreat as a topic. Am I remembering that correctly or was that a separate topic?
I think it was separate, honestly. Um, I do think it came from Virginia, uh, but I think it's really important that we had talked about this idea that it's, it's, it's important to have that whole vision for what the year is like and all the different things that a board is going to address in its governance of the district over time. Does that make sense? Um, and I think, Virginia, did you not make that suggestion?
Yes, uh, actually, this is something that, uh, I brought up. I think it's going to help us to be better organized ourselves and also for the staff to balance the staff work, that we make sure that we're not demanding too much of you, because there's statutory deadlines that we cannot change, like for example, the noted actials. So if we have our governance calendar that shows all of the statutory deadlines, then we can publish it on our website, there's, it's completely transparent and say, why is the board doing this? Why is the board not doing it on a different day? Well, it's because we have the statutory deadline. And also, when we ask, uh, requests of you, Dr. Maldonado, that I said, I would really like a review of all the place at the high schools, because I do, then you could come back and say, well, look at our governance calendar. We're not going to be able to get to that until April. So I think that would be a tool for everyone to know what, what we have to do and accommodate deadlines.
Okay, that's perfectly clear, and we'll make this one a priority, since we're in such a great spot at the beginning of the year. So we'll try to get that done possibly by the 27th.
I think that might be too much to ask of you. How about if we?
You know, maybe, I'm conceiving of this asked a little differently, clearly. So I'm conceiving that I'm bringing the board a governance calendar outlining themes and deadlines that we want to do for the rest of the year, which I feel, given like tools like CSBA gives us around governance calendar, which does lay out some of those statutory requirements. So maybe you could say more about what you would like to see before we continue?
Yeah, I'm, that's fine. If you, I, I'm thinking two weeks might not be enough for you. I don't want to add to your staff workload. If you think that's doable, we can start with that. It's totally up to you.
We could make it interactive. We'll bring it, we'll see what we can, and then the last one was the joint meeting with the SB City Council and SPCC.
Yes, uh, the context there is that used to be an annual occurrence, um, and it just kind of fell, fell off the radar during the pandemic. And I thought it was a valuable experience, the few times that I participated in that. So we just rotate, um, one year, they, the members of the city council would come here. Uh, the next year, we'd go there. We'd come up with a joint agenda of overlapping things. Certain topic once was libraries, another topic was, uh, sustainability, I believe, one was crime. Um, and we heard from the police chief, et cetera. So just, again, uh, it's not a must-do. Uh, it's a nice-to-do, and I, I'm not sure exactly what happened to the, to the tradition, but I, I valued it.
Right, so I can certainly reach out to our partners, uh, and maybe get back to the board on this one and see what the viability is given agendas, because I imagine, are these the same Tuesdays that it would have fallen on for their meeting and our meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe so. But again, I don't want to, I'm not pushing for this. Uh, if, if it's, I think you should just make an assessment if, how high a priority is and maybe check in with whoever you want to check in with, but, or maybe that's President Muñoz's role. But I just, uh, was more curious about kind of why it stopped and wondered if anyone like me was wondering the same thing.
Right, and just.
No, I think it was COVID, Laura. It has to have been COVID. We just didn't do anything.
That's true.
Right, and then I saw that it's written joint meeting with.
Like that.
And Santa Barbara, um, City College, and I know, I mean, during my term.
We used to do that too, yeah.
It was Santa Barbara City Council was what we had, um, a joint meeting with. I, I don't know how often the City College, you know, did you alternate?
Yeah, we did the same, actually, uh, again, as well. So also, similar fashion. Once a year, we would, uh, have a joint meeting with the City College Trustees and talk about issues. And I believe that they were in addition to, maybe sort of like board, the study sessions, in addition to our regular schedule. So it's more work and it's more time and all of those things. But, uh, again, I just found the conversations valuable, especially at the beginning of my tenure on the board, because you learn a lot about the, the shared priorities and the shared ways in which we interact together.
Okay, thank you. So we.
So am I hearing that I, I and Board President Muñoz will do some research around this one and get back to the board about its viability? I wasn't here for those, so I'll, I'll need to do a little bit of catching up here, and we will talk about that and discuss it at the next meeting. Good?
Excellent, thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd be glad.
Sure, yeah, I'd be glad to help and look into that. And I know, Dr. Maldonado, that the other item you had brought up was the CSBA conference in December?
Oh, yes, that was something we discussed about gauging the interest of the board in attending that conference in San Diego, December 1st through the 3rd. So I'm just interested in finding out if that is something we should be planning for as well.
Ms. Sims-Moynson?
I, I actually, I went and got my phone, so. Anyway, so yeah, so I'm interested in, in attending the CSBA. I always think that's a good thing, it's also a bonding time with new board members as we will have at least one coming in, maybe, you know, different things. So I think it's a good idea to, to do that. But I mean, obviously, through the, through the COVID, it was offered virtually, so I don't know if that's still going to be an option. I don't know how that we could really kind of come together as a governance team, really through COVID, I mean, excuse me, through virtual. But I, I recommend that we do, but.
I'll, I'll get back to you on that, I'll, I'll have to see my calendar. And I'd be interested.
Okay.
That'd be December, yeah.
Great, thank you, that was it for me.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, then we will go ahead and, and adjourn. The next board meeting will be on Tuesday, September 27th at 5:30. Thank you very much. Thank you.